Seeing that it's 6:30 and we have a quorum, let's go ahead and call to order this regular session of Common Council on Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty.
Here.
Ruff.
Here.
Rallo.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Stossberg.
Here.
Daley.
Here.
Zulik.
Here.
Rosenberg.
Here.
Asari.
Very present.
Not just moderately.
Thank you very much. I'm glad that we're all present in attendance this evening. I want to start the meeting. I'd like to remind the public that as an alternate to reading the Land and Labor Acknowledgement for the City of Bloomington, I'm starting meetings this year with various bits of information related to the history of segregation and persecution and milestones that have marked our societal progress toward equity and understanding of cultural differences and similarities. And tonight I want to highlight that, of course, it's February and that is Black History Month. And we kicked off Black History Month on Saturday with an event here in City Hall. And the theme of the Bloomington Black History Month this year is African Americans and labor in recognition to the numerous ways that Black Americans have contributed to the infrastructure that built this country, both economically and actual, like, physical infrastructure. And there are many events that are taking place this month, and I want to highlight two, one of which is next Saturday, February 15th, here in City Hall. It is the Black Market, which I believe is from 10:00 to 2:00, and so that will have various vendors, all Black vendors, serving their wares. And I got a very nice pair of earrings there last year, so I'm excited to go to that again. And that market is actually to pay homage to the -- there was a black market that was firebombed here in 1968. There is plenty of history about that online for people who want to dive a little deeper, but the location of that black market was actually where Peoples Park is now, right on Kirkwood. And so there's also a historical marker there to commemorate that event. And then, secondly, I just also want to highlight the Black History Month Gala, which is on Saturday, March 1st, to really finish up the month, and tickets are available for that. So I hope that people consider going. So with that wrapped up, next, agenda summation. We're going to start with an approval of minutes this evening. We have three sets of minutes for approval. And I'll note for council members, there was an updated version of that sent out this afternoon with some small changes. Then we will have a section for reports. Twenty minutes is set aside for reports for council members, and then the mayor and city offices, where we have a report from the clerk tonight, council committee reports, and then that will be concluded by our first period of public comment for items not on the agenda. So that will be the first opportunity for the public to come to the podium and make any comments. Next, we will have appointments to boards and commissions, and then we will have legislation for first readings, where we will first hear Ordinance 2025-05, which makes changes to Title II. And then we'll have our second readings and resolutions. There's actually one third reading in there tonight, and that will be legislation that we'll discuss and likely vote on this evening. We'll start with appropriation, Ordinance 2025-01, to additionally appropriate from the General Fund for the Downtown Outreach Program. Then Ordinance 2025-03, related to amending Ordinance 2024-20 that fixed the salaries, or some of the salaries, of Bloomington departments. Next, we'll have Ordinance 2025-01, which is a third reading to amend the Curry PUD project, otherwise known as the Ralato. And then we'll wrap up legislation with Ordinance 2025-04, which also changes, amends Title II of code to add the Transportation Commission. After legislation, we will have an additional period of public comment. We will have 25 more minutes for people to comment on items that are not on the agenda. And as a reminder, you can speak in one of those two periods of general public comment, but not both of them. We'll have any notes about council schedule, and then we'll adjourn. So we have quite a lot of things this evening. So shall we get started with those minutes?
I move that the minutes from May 15th, 2024, September 4th, 2024, and September 18th, 2024, be adopted.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt those minutes. I assume that they're as amended and sent out this afternoon. Is that the intention of your motion?
Forgive me. Yes, I move that as amended and sent out this afternoon in our packets.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on those? Great, seeing as we're all in person tonight, we can just do a voice vote on that. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Thank you. That motion carries. Next, we'll have reports from council members. I'll start on my left with Councilmember Asari. Do you have a report this evening?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulik.
Yes, thank you. So I know some of you may know that on Monday, I had a listening session on the closure of Kirkwood and how we can make it better in the coming years, as there is now an indefinite seasonal closure of Kirkwood, which I am very excited about and a lot of my constituents are very excited about, but not all of them. And so that's why I wanted to, you know, talk to them about the different pros and cons of closing Kirkwood and how we can make it as accessible to the most people possible. Thank you to Bloomington Transit and everyone else who showed up, but yes, my dear friend Christopher M. G. over in the crowd. But so what Bloomington Transit said was that there are sometimes spare bus drivers in the seasons where students aren't in town, and that it might be possible to create kind of a shuttle program from parking garages to the side streets of Kirkwood to mitigate some of the issues that might come with a decrease in parking spots and especially accessibility spots. Additionally, the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development announced that there will be additional accessibility spots opening up on side streets. So if anyone has any other feedback on how we can make Kirkwood more accessible while simultaneously activating the space, please feel free to reach out. My email is sidney.zulik@bloomington.in.gov, and I would love to hear from you. Yeah, that pretty much concludes what we talked about. But I thought it was a very successful listening session. About 20 people showed up, and I felt like I got a really good understanding of why people might not like it so much. And hopefully, we can create something that works for them as well. So, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Daley.
Thank you. First off, I just want to say happy Black History Month. I hope everybody goes and attends some of the events, especially the gala. I went to that last year. It was a lot of fun on March 1st. And just a reminder that I do have a constituent meeting coming up next Tuesday, February 11th, at 5:00 p.m. This is going to be at the southeast branch of the Monroe County Public Library, Meeting Room B. So it's between 5:00 and 6:00. If you can't get there right at 5:00, there's not a plan, an agenda, no song and dinner. Just drop on in and have a chat with me. And it's -- I represent District 5, but if you don't live in District 5, but you want to come on down anyway, that'd be fabulous. I'd love to meet you and have a chat. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ruff.
No, of course not. Thank you.
Councilmember Rallo.
Yeah, I think I'll make just a brief report. It seems timely that because there was an accident on Seventh Street this past week involving a bicyclist in a bus. And hopefully, that individual is recovering. And I think it's -- I don't -- not here to address the exact circumstance, but just to say that Seventh Street has been a conundrum for some of us for some time, and that is that since it was made, since a bike lane was established on Seventh Street and stop signs were removed on Morton and Washington, Lincoln, Grant, and Dunn Street, it was apparent to me and some that there was an element of hazard that was introduced. And I think that's been borne out over time. The engineer of the city had implemented by 90-day order repeatedly, the Dunn Street stop sign was reintroduced, and we eventually adopted that. But -- and the council actually adopted stop signs on Morton, Washington, and Lincoln two years ago. And that was adopted by the council, a vote of 5 to 4, but that was vetoed by the mayor at the time, John Hamilton. So the stop signs never materialized. And then we took it on again last year, and that was postponed. So that's sort of the history of where we are in that. I think the hazard has remained. And I think that, you know, this is something that we're going to be addressing a new commission this evening. So I won't talk about that here, but what I'd like to say is that relative to traffic calming projects, the council used to have oversight. Then that was relegated to the Bike and Ped Safety Commission, and that became problematic. We've been debating that for some time, including in December, when we first heard the subject that we're going to talk about later. But the astounding thing is that we've since learned from corporate counsel, Margie Rice, that they have been -- that the power to install these traffic calming projects has always been in the control of the engineer. The engineer, maybe there was an advisory role that could have been played, but it really was never the council's, under the council's oversight or the Bike and Ped Safety Commission. Now I understand that that is the case for stop signs as well, or at least that's the opinion that I've heard emanating from the administration right now. That's maybe yet to be resolved. I think our council attorney is going to be meeting with corporate counsel to discuss this. But if that's the case, these things should have been put in. And I hope they will be put in, these stop signs. I think, from what I gather, the majority of people support it, at least from my perspective that I've been hearing from. The Traffic Commission supported it, and the engineer supports it. And I think that this needs to be acted on posthaste. But I'll have more questions later pertaining to this specific commission and their role. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I have a few things to report. We have -- there's been some good news in the past week from the Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe County. The grant from the Lilly Endowment, their Gift Eight grant, has been obtained. So the Community Foundation applied for this grant last fall. The city council, as you may recall, issued a letter of support, and also the mayor's office did the same. And recently, we found out that a $7,394,000 grant has been given to the Community Foundation to work on homelessness in our community. So this is great news. It's going to be used mainly for hiring 10 case managers throughout the community within partner agencies that work most closely with unhoused individuals. And then in addition to case management, the grant will support a pilot program of a housing stability income supplement for families that are at risk of losing their housing. So this is incredibly good news for our community, as we are facing increasing numbers of people who are unhoused and trying to support our neighbors that are in danger of losing their housing. So that's some good news to report. Also, on Monday night, I joined Mayor Kerry Thompson at the Traveling Town Hall for District 1, which was held at Summit Elementary School. And one of the big -- there were about 30 people who came, and one of the big topics was the potential move of the Bloomington Police Headquarters to a new location at an existing building at 714 South Rogers Street, which is just the northern edge of the McDole Gardens neighborhood, which is in District 1. So there were a lot of questions about, you know, traffic and concern about -- some people thought the police presence would make the neighborhood safer. Some people thought it might make it less safe, depending on your perspective. So there was a good conversation about that, and those conversations are just beginning, of course. There will be many to come before a definite decision and funding is made about that project. And finally, I will have my monthly constituent meeting, as always, the second Saturday of the month. So that is this coming Saturday, February 8th. Yes, February 8th, at 11:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon. It'll be via Zoom, and you can get the Zoom link on the city council website. So that's it for my report this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I just want to announce a constituent meeting for myself as well. It is not correct in my online calendar right now. My February is a little complicated. February 15th is a busy day, so my constituent meeting this month will be February 16th, which is a Sunday, at 3:00 via Zoom. So that information will be uploaded correctly into the calendar probably tomorrow. So, thank you. Next, we will move into reports from the mayor and city offices, and we have a report from Clerk Bolden.
Good evening, council members. My name is Nicole Bolden. I'm the city clerk. For those who may be visually impaired, I'm a bronchian black woman, wearing a tan jacket and a floral print blouse. So I try to come in front of you and give you a quick report every year at about this time. And I'd like to start by talking about boards and commissions. This year, you started with 56 appointments to make. So far, you've made 10. You may have seven or eight to make tonight, and that will leave you with the remaining 22 vacant seats for appointments. I do want to remind all of you that we can get through these rather quickly if you are responsive to scheduling requests for setting up meetings and attendance. So I'll leave that there, but I know that you all want to actually do your jobs, and we want to do ours, and we want to help you achieve your goals or your outcomes, as Councilmember Asari is fond of referring to. In 2024, just a quick update, we had 7,601 parking ticket appeals that came through out of 52,387 that were issued. Just to give you some numbers, so you have a sense of what's happening, if you have more questions about it, I am happy to answer them for you. This year, we're off to a slow start, which I am grateful for. It's given us a chance to breathe and see where we are. For minutes this year, one of the outcomes I said I wanted to really get to is making sure that we've gotten all our minutes to you. So we have nine sets of minutes that are ready for approval from 2024 through 2025. And there are still, for those of you who've been on the council for a while, there are still some minutes from some of my predecessors that are waiting to be approved, and we've kind of put that to the bottom of my priority list. But you will see those probably later this year. I don't want you to be surprised, and we can talk about how to get those knocked out with some speed. By the way, I'm kind of ripping through this report, because originally it was planned to just be one little thing, but everything kind of kept growing. So my apologies for it. Next, today I had my board meeting at AIM, which is Accelerate Indiana Municipalities. Normally, I don't report to you about those board meetings, but I did want to highlight a couple of things that were coming through. There are several pieces of legislation that will affect property taxes and our funding. I know you all are aware of it. I'm sure that Controller McClellan is aware of it as well. But AIM has a campaign called Replace, Don't Erase, and they're encouraging municipalities to pass resolutions. I do have the website available for you. It's aimindiana.org/rede. I think that stands for the Replace, Don't Erase. So you can look at that, and they will have sample resolutions if you are so inclined as to pass a resolution. They did say that that's very helpful in terms of encouraging legislators to maybe not pass things that will be harmful to local municipalities in terms of their funding. So if you're inclined, they've got one in place, and I know that resolutions can go a little bit faster than ordinances. So I wanted to highlight that for you. Similarly, yesterday, they had a hearing, and I don't know if any of you are aware of House Bill 1633, which was encouraging local elections to be moved to presidential years. That actually got stripped out of the House bill, but the Senate bill is still actually available, so we'll see where that shakes out. I just wanted to highlight that for you. And there are some other pieces of legislation that will be impacting municipalities. So there are some on annexation. Actually, there are several on annexation. Housing and public notices, which is, as you all know, our favorite thing to talk about here. So that is some of the things that I added at the very, very last minute, because what I really wanted to talk to you about was Black History Month. It is Black History Month. Happy Black History Month. You know, happy Black people. Right? So in 1926, Carter G. Wilson was actually studying Black History. He was one of the first historians who was actively studying it. And he proposed a one-week celebration to coincide with Abraham Lincoln's birthday, to celebrate contributions that African Americans have made to this country. In 1970, in Kent State in Ohio, the students worked toward it, and they made it a month-long celebration. And then in 1976, it went national. So I like to highlight this, because this is something that started small, and historians and students and activists made it into something that we continue to celebrate. And we're celebrating Black History all year long, but this is the time we talk about it most. Yes? And so -- so here we are. And we had our kickoff meeting on Saturday, and I saw a few of you there, meeting, event for the city. I saw a few of you there. I hope to see the rest of you at the remaining events for the rest of the month. I know you can't come to everyone. Everybody's busy. But we have the Black Market, which Councilmember Stossberg talked about on the 15th. We have our Black History Month poster ceremony on the 22nd, and the Black History Month Gala, which will be, okay, not technically in February, but it's on March 1st. And it's always a lovely event. Shatoya Moss always, and her department, always do a wonderful job in terms of giving us events and education and things that we can do in Bloomington and participate in being community together. And I really encourage you all to come. And last, you all know, I don't come up here and talk to you without giving you something to do. Every time. But I wanted to highlight something that Mayor Thompson said at the kickoff meeting. When talking about African Americans and their contributions to our country, to our town, she said, "And yet, too often, that labor has gone unseen, unrecognized, and unrewarded." And I'm going to repeat it for emphasis. Unseen, unrecognized, and unrewarded. We can do better. And so to start, I would suggest that you take this month to be more deliberate in your purchasing. So you can go to organizations like the 15% Pledge, which started as a nonprofit that recognized that African Americans make up 15% of this country. So they worked in partnerships with retailers to commit to dedicate 15% of their shelf space to Black-owned brands. We have some of those partners here in our community. You can go to them, go to the website, find out where they are. Or there are also resources available where you can go to Black-owned companies and buy your hair products, your makeup, your clothes, your shoes. You can find people who can build a spreadsheet for you if you want them to. There are resources available to you. This is probably one of the few times when I will offer up my labor in this regard without compensation to say, "I will help you if you need it." So that is my call to action for you this time. I appreciate your time, and I'm here if you have any questions about the direct business of the clerk's office. And thank you for the applause.
Does anybody have any questions for Clerk Bolden?
Bolden, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda are reports from council committees. I am not aware that we have any reports from council committees tonight. Wonderful. And next, we'll move on to our first period of general public comment. So this is a 20-minute period of time where we can hear from the public. You'll have three minutes to speak, and this time is set aside to speak on items that are not on the agenda this evening. So if you came to speak on something that is on the agenda, you can save the comments for that piece of legislation. But if there's anybody in chambers or online who would like to speak to something outside the agenda, please approach the podium. And if you're online, you can use the raise hand feature under reactions or send a chat message to the host. I don't see anybody moving right now, so I'm dawdling a little bit, waiting for our clerk to get back into position. Is there anybody online who wishes to make a comment? Okay, we don't -- any takers in chambers? Oh, there is one person online now. Wonderful. Go ahead. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes when you get unmuted.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing public comment this evening. My name is Eric Ost, and I would like to bring your and the community's attention to the recent collision on Seventh Street, in which it was reported that a bicycle collided with a bus that had turned south onto Washington Street. Our thoughts and prayers are with all involved in this accident. As reported, the physics of the event indicate the bus was already in front of the bicycle and was in the process of completing the turn onto South Washington Street. The restricted turning radius at the Seventh Street and South Washington Street intersection requires any vehicle turning right from the regular travel lane to proceed slowly. And a bus, in particular, would be traveling quite slowly in order to successfully navigate this intersection. In contrast, a bicycle traveling down the incline, albeit shallow, from North Walnut to this intersection would see no legal requirement to yield to turning vehicles, as the always-stop control was intentionally removed from this intersection. Director of Engineering, Andrew Seabor's 2023 petition to restore all of the always-stop controls on Seventh Street was based on his professional analysis of data measured after construction of the bidirectional, separated bike lane on the south side of Seventh Street. Director Seabor's 2023 presentation concluded with a series of findings and recommendations. These were and are the finding that the removal of the always-stop control at the five subject intersections, Morton, Washington, Lincoln, Grant, and Dunn, resulted in an increase in intersection-related crashes generally unrelated to the two-way protected bike lane. Before the removal of the always-stop control intersections, the corridor averaged about 25 reported crashes per year. Without always-stop control at the five subject intersections, the corridor averaged about 40 crashes per year. With the reinstallation of the always-stop control at Dunn Street intersection, the corridor has been averaging about 30 crashes per year. If all five intersections are converted to always-stop, the corridor is expected to average about 15 to 20 crashes per year. And the recommendation was, and likely remains, staff recommends that a Title 15 amendment be forwarded to the city council to reinstall all always-stop control at the five locations. Excuse me. The recent crash on Seventh Street might have been one of the crashes avoided by reinstallation of all of the always-stops on Seventh Street. Please consider restoring all of the always-stop controls on Seventh Street before additional avoidable crashes occur. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else on Zoom who would wish to comment, or is there anybody in chambers who's decided to step forward? All right, not seeing anybody, and not seeing any notification that there's anybody on Zoom. We will carry on to appointments to boards and commissions, and I do believe there are some of those this evening. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, on behalf of Interview Committee B, I would like to make the following recommendations. For the Commission on the Status of Women, to reappoint Landry Culp to seat C4. For the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission, to reappoint Kamala Sparks -- Brown Sparks to seat C6. It says Sparks Brown in the memo, but it's Brown Sparks. For the Environmental Commission, to reappoint Adam Martinez to For the Environmental Commission, to reappoint Adam Martinez to seat C5. For the Bloomington Digital Underground Advisory Committee, to reappoint Mike Allen to seat C1. And for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration Commission, to reappoint Latonya Wilson to seat C3.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for that slate of appointments. Thank you to Team B, and thank you to all of those folks who have stepped up and shown interest in these various boards and commissions. Does anybody have any questions or comments about these appointments? All right, seeing none. I think we can do a voice vote on this, too. All in favor of these appointments to these, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, yep, five appointments to these seats. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Wonderful. That passes unanimously. For the record, Councilmember Ruff is out of the room. Are there any other recommendations? Councilmember Zulik?
Interview Committee Team C, I move that for the Tree Commission, we reappoint Travis Harding to seat C1 and Stephanie Freeman Day to seat C2.
Great, thank you. We have Tree Commission appointments. Does anybody have any questions or comments on those? Wonderful. All those in favor of these two Tree Commission appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and that passes unanimously. Do we have any more? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Hi, thank you. On behalf of Interview Committee A, I would like to recommend Diana Opata to seat C1 on the Commission on the Status of Black Males.
Second.
Not in the packet. Councilmember Rosenberg, do you want to say a couple more words about that?
This isn't in the packet because we interviewed Diana today, but the first meeting, they meet monthly on the second Wednesday, and there's been trouble reaching quorum at these meetings, and the next meeting is next Wednesday, so we wanted to try to get her appointed as soon as we could.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about that? Clerk Bolden?
Who made the second?
Councilmember Assari. Are there any other questions or comments about this appointment? Great. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Wonderful. That passes unanimously. Big thank you out to all of the volunteers willing to serve on these different roles on boards and commissions. There's a lot of really great work being done by our boards and commissions, so thank you for all of that. And also, thank you to Clerk Crossley, who helps arrange all of those interview committees and all the boards and commissions. Next, moving on to legislation for first readings.
I move that Ordinance 2025-05 be introduced and read by the Clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Wonderful. We have a motion for Ordinance 2025-05 to be read into the record for first reading. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-05 to amend the following titles of the Bloomington Municipal Code 2.12 Boards and Commissions and Councils, Title 2.19 Housing and Neighborhood Development, Title 2.23 Community and Family Resources Department, and Title 2.20 Bloomington Board of Park Commissioners. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Piedmont Smith and is a result of the work done by the Special Committee on Council Processes in 2024, which she chaired. It brings forward revisions to Bloomington Municipal Code related to 13 resident boards and commissions in order to update and clarify the duties of each entity, require an annual written report by each entity to the common council and the mayor, and to make other revisions which came up during the special committee's review of Bloomington Municipal Code and discussions with staff liaisons which serve the boards and commissions referenced.
Great, thank you. We will have a second reading for that ordinance two weeks from today. That's February 19th. Now for second readings and resolutions.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would you entertain a motion to amend the agenda, just to change the order of some of our second readings?
What is it?
I'm wondering if we should, if we should put the, essentially do C and D before we do A and B.
I did it that way for a reason, because I think C and D are, I think A and B are going to be shorter than C and D.
Okay.
And if I'm wrong about that, I'm really sorry to C and D, but.
Same reasoning was why I was thinking of flipping them, but.
Oh, okay.
I'll make, I'll let me make the motion and see what our colleagues think.
Okay.
Motion to amend the, the agenda to move item C and D in the place of A, to flip A and B with C and D.
I'm trying to figure out if that is debatable. Is that? If our council attorneys or the parliamentarian could weigh in, is that a suspension of rules to change the order of the agenda?
I think this is in local code. We're looking, hold on.
I'm sorry, what?
I think the answer is in local code, so we're looking at the exact provision. One moment.
Okay, thank you. I think it does count as a suspension of rules because it's considering something out of order. Unless it says something specific in our local code about changing the agenda. Well, we're trying to figure out if it's debatable, that's the question, because if it's a motion to suspend the rules, then it is not debatable, and it has to pass by a two-thirds majority. And I think that it does, but I'm going to wait for our attorney's verification on it. Council attorneys, do you have any indication that this is a debatable motion? Is there anybody interested in debating the motion? Yes, there is somebody interested in debating the motion, if it's debatable, so.
Okay, I found it. It was in a different section, so. 2.04.380 Order of Business at Regular Sessions. It says you can conduct your business in the following order. You may, by majority vote, amend the normal order of business.
So it is debatable. Can you, can you, what's that code citing again?
2.04.380 Order of Business at Regular Sessions.
380. There it is. Okay, so I think that it is debatable. So Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I would argue against the motion because I do think that items A and B are going to not take very long. And I would hate to have the staff who are here for those items, or any public commenters who are here for those items, to have to wait through the longer portion of the meeting, which I believe will be comprised of C and D.
Are there other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and move to a, move to a roll call vote on this. So Clerk Bolden, can you please call the roll on the motion to switch agenda items to put C first, followed by D, followed by A, followed by B? Councilmember Flaherty?
No.
Ruff?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Stossberg?
No.
Daley?
No.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenberg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion fails 3-6, so we're going to go ahead and go with the agenda as it is printed.
Councilmember Daley.
I move appropriation ordinance 2025-01 be introduced and read by the Clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Will the clerk please, please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 2025-01 to additionally appropriate from the General Fund for the Downtown Outreach Program. The synopsis is as follows. This appropriation ordinance funds the Downtown Outreach Grant Program and the General Fund, Community and Family Resources Department, for the, for the year 2025 for $250,000.
Thank you.
I move appropriation ordinance 2025-01 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Looks like we have Controller McClellan here to present.
Good evening, Council. Controller Jessica McClellan. I'm going to try to make this as simple for you to follow as possible. I made a boo-boo, and I want you to vote no on this tonight because I'm going to come back to you and appropriate the Downtown Outreach Grant out of the opioid settlement, settlement funds. And so just as a quick summary, this, of the process, I did advertise this hearing in the Herald Times as required for this hearing date. And so we would like to hold that hearing. We'd like to give you guys the opportunity to hear that I did initially ask the council to appropriate $250,000 out of the General Fund to fund the annual Downtown Outreach Grant Program. This program has come out of the Parking Meter Fund since 2018. We decided that is not an allowable expense out of the Parking Meter Fund. We all agreed on that. And that I was going to come back in 2025 to give you a funding source. At first, I thought General Fund, and then after looking at the recipients of the Downtown Outreach Grant and looking at what actually Monroe County has given their opioid settlement funds to, they are the same organizations that help people with substance use disorder, specifically opioid substance use disorder. I think it's a very good fit, and so that is why I want you to vote no on this in the General Fund tonight, so I can come back to you with the same request out of a different fund.
Do councilmembers have any questions for the controller about this procedure this evening? Councilmember, sorry.
Why we can't just amend it in, in state currently, if you could explain?
Good question. I would like to re, because it is an additional appropriation, I'm going to re-advertise it out of a different fund. And so you can't amend it tonight. We did look into that with Council Attorney Lehner. And we can't amend it tonight because I'm going to re-advertise to, because we have to let the public know that we are appropriating a budget out of a different fund.
Great, thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, we've got to go to public comment with this. Is there any member of the public who would like to make a comment about appropriation ordinance 2025-01? If you are here in chambers, go ahead and approach the podium. If you're interested in commenting on this online on Zoom, please use the reactions tab to raise your hand or send a chat meeting to the host. I don't see any takers in chambers. Do we have any takers online?
The public commentary is also the public hearing.
Correct. Yes. Thank you for that clarification. Because this does need to count as the public hearing for this. All right, seeing nobody, we'll go back to council for any council comments or additional questions. Does anybody have anything they want to say? I'll, I'll just say real quick, a thank you to the controller, and we'll look forward to seeing this at first reading again out of a different fund on the 19th of February. And then another hearing on March 5th is the current plan.
Madam President, could I ask one quick question?
Yes.
It just occurs to me. My question is, what's the longevity of the opioid settlement? Is that going to be something that we can expect in perpetuity? Because parking would be, so is it?
15 years.
15 years, okay, good.
Yeah, it'll be sufficient to fund it for those 15 years, and there'll be other, there'll, there'll be other funds that the city is working on with other, the city is working with the other providers in this, in the city to use those funds, too, to decide on the plan.
Got it, thank you.
Great. Any other last comments or questions before we vote? Great. Will the clerk please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 2025-01? Councilmember Ruff?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Stossberg?
No.
Daley?
No.
Zulik?
No, and bless you.
Rosenberg?
No.
Assari?
No.
And Flaherty?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. So that's ordinance fails 09 as requested by the controller. Next.
I move ordinance 2025-03 be introduced and read by the Clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Just a minute, sorry. Ordinance 2025-03, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2024-20 that fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2025. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends ordinance 2024-20, which fixes salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for the year 2025. The amendment comes at the request of the Human Resources Department to reflect changes to several non-union positions within the city.
Thank you.
I move ordinance 2025-03 be adopted.
Second.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Who do we have here to present this this evening? Please state your full name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Erica DeSantis, and I'm the Director of Compensation and Benefits here for the City of Bloomington. Today, we are presenting additional amendments to ordinance 2025-03, which seeks to amend ordinance 2024-20, the ordinance that sets the salaries for appointed officials, non-union, and AFSMI employees across the city. Tonight, we are presenting the first round of changes from, that have emerged from our work process. Work, which stands for the Workforce Evaluation and Realignment Committee, is the appeals process for salary grades set last year based on existing job descriptions and org charts. Work allows department heads to restructure their organizational charts, rewrite job descriptions, and present them to be reevaluated. We will bring other changes throughout the year as we process those revisions. As you know, in October of '24, council members requested an amendment to address pay grade assignments within the Planning Department. Planning was one of several departments already in the queue for additional review to better understand the department's structure, recruitment needs, and to ensure transparent communication regarding HR processes and best practices. Today, we are bringing forward further revisions to the salary ordinance based on these discussions and additional feedback from other directors experiencing critical needs within their own departments. departments. The purpose of the salary study is to enhance our compensation practices. We've always anticipated that the implementation would occur gradually, with improvements being rolled out in phases over the course of several years. This is not a one-time process. Every two years, we will conduct a full check against the market and what we have learned about the effectiveness of our policies. But we do face certain limitations in implementing changes this first year. First, the controller allocated $6 million for 2025 to cover increased salaries and their related benefits. More than two-thirds of those funds have already been dedicated for initial adjustments at the start of the year, and changes resulting from the work committee process, like the ones we're bringing today, will take more of them. Second, many positions at the highest pay grades of the city are not yet aligned to market standards, which would likely require us to expand the top end of our pay structure even further. But our first focus is making sure to, is making as much progress as possible across all grades. Still, salary caps for other roles, salary caps at the highest levels do create downward pressure on other roles, so we know we will not resolve all salary problems immediately. Nonetheless, it's important to note that many roles, especially those with longevity, receive very significant pay increases. Additionally, the city is currently conducting a study on compensation for ASME employees. Until we receive the results, we are cautious about making further substantial adjustments to non-union positions, as these may draw from the same limited funding pools. And finally, and definitely worth noting, due to the political landscape, there is significant uncertainty at both the state and federal levels regarding funding, which could significantly impact the city's budget and our ability to sustain these changes in future years. We believe caution is warranted. It's important to understand that the grades were determined initially based on existing job descriptions, which were reviewed to understand similarities across positions within the city. This work was primarily conducted in the first part of 2023. Implementation of the results was paused in the fall of '23 to ensure that the new incoming administration could review and provide feedback on the proposed structure. And then, of course, during this time, positions evolved as departments adapted to changing needs, requiring us to repeat certain processes and reassess certain recommendations. We then took additional time to gather the feedback from both old and new department heads, making adjustments based on their input and market research. Our goal is to build a compensation system that is transparent, equitable, and sustainable. With input from department heads and further market analysis, we believe we have arrived at a well-informed set of recommendations. Since the October council meeting, HR and our consultant, Kelsey Gregory, have worked closely with David Hiddle, the head of the Planning Department, to study the job description, to study updates to job descriptions for various planning staff. These updated descriptions align with the planner and planning manager job levels in the new compensating, compensation structure, adhering to the requirements, required qualifications and experience for each, making grade determinations straightforward. As a result, with our currently proposed amendments, all positions in the Planning Department will have had their positions' grades increased, some as many as three grades. Salary adjustments within the Planning Department are now mapped, sorry, salary grades within the Planning Department for planners are now mapped to grades that either meet or exceed the salaries of comparable jobs throughout Indiana and the surrounding region. Salary adjustments within the Planning Department range, have ranged from several hundred more dollars a year to increases ranging from $8,500 to nearly $30,000 per individual. Overall, these adjustments to the Planning Department cost nearly $330,000, which represents 8.7% of the money allocated so far, despite the fact that planning staff represents only 3.8% of the number of positions included in the salary study. In comparison, there were 16 other departments or divisions that had positions that saw no changes at all to their grades, and some even saw reductions in grades for future hires, though no current employee received a pay cut. Overall, the salary increases across the city ranged from modest cost of living increases to nearly $40,000. As I mentioned, the work process has already been launched with the first of two deadlines for this year already behind us. Critical priorities will be expediated, and the expected timeline for the implementation of the other requests is mid-year. There is a second deadline of June 1st for additional work requests that will be implemented in January of '26. Department heads may continue to use the form to initiate conversations about specific positions as needed. While individual employees may not initiate a review, they are encouraged to speak with their department head with any questions or concerns they have. We will continue working and collaborating with department heads to refine our understanding of the positions across the city and how they relate to the broader market. This process is designed to be ongoing, with adjustments made as new information emerges. The question is not whether we have all salaries perfect today, but whether we have made meaningful progress in addressing years of overlooked needs and building a more equitable, transparent, and sustainable system. I'm confident we're on the right track, but we recognize that much work remains. Our focus for the first half of this year will be on communicating these changes to staff and continuing to refine our approach. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Assari?
Thank you so much, Erica. Just a question, and I think you addressed this to some extent in the memo, but I think that it's prudent for us to ask. I mean, you mentioned the concerns around federal funding, landscape, and those type of things, but in the broader sense, we've increased funding for salary positions, you know, across the board. And, you know, over the last four years, that's sort of increased by something like $20 million or something like that. I mean, it's quite a large amount of money and a large portion of our budget. Could you just give general thoughts particularly to the general public around sustainability? Because, I mean, we've already, I think, well debated the need for us to be an employer of choice and all of those outcomes that we're trying to achieve in raising salaries, et cetera. But could you talk a little bit about sustainability of these efforts?
I will say what I know, which unfortunately is limited. I'm not as intimately involved with how the budget is run and what our funding sources are. What I do know is we have $6 million that was given to us for this year, and we have about $4.5 million already allocated. And the additional changes that continue to come through work, new positions that come up, changes to positions as we learn more about them and understand the positions more, are going to continue to take up more and more of these funds. Particularly, the ASME study is very important to us as well. We are going through that work this first quarter, and until we see those results, we are really cautious to implement anything further.
Go ahead.
And then, just again, for clarifying sake, so this is, you know, stage 1.5 of a multi-year process as well that we'll continue to do in years to come, right, in terms of resetting, doing market analysis, you know, et cetera?
Absolutely, yes. This was always intended to be rolled out over several years. We have had such a deficit in terms of our salaries for so many employees for so many years that we cannot correct them all at once, all in one year. So we are making the adjustments that we feel are most sustainable for the city right now, that impact the majority of the city employees, and we are going to be continuing to drill down onto the issues that department heads still see.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Daley?
Hi, thank you. So I just, I think I'm tugging on that same thread a little bit, but I just want to follow up and be, and be, make sure that I'm clear on this. Because at the end of last year, we had brought forward an amendment to adjust some of the pay grades in the Planning Department, which you did talk about extensively in your presentation. And so it seems some of them are addressed, but not all of them. I noticed, for example, you know, aside from the director, the three highest positions were not included in this. Can you talk to me a little bit about why? I think maybe you were touching on it, but can we just get some clarification? Thank you.
Absolutely. Right now, we have 14 pay grades. The top two pay grades are reserved for department heads or administrators. We also have a policy right now that an assistant director in a department is two levels below a department head. So we have, if we have a level 13 or a grade 13 director, as we do in planning, the highest assistant director they could have is 11, which means the highest staff underneath that can be a 10. We are already maxed out at the top of that scale. I will say that the initial recommendation from our salary study came back and said that we should explore going to 17 grades. We felt that was not sustainable initially. We felt it would be sticker shock. It would also increase so many of the salaries of the highest paid officials that we thought it would bring more disruption. So we elected to go in the middle and to do 14 and to implement these changes. But we do expect that in future years, we may need to come back and expand the system even further.
So for clarification, then, so we set, or, I'm sorry, the administration sets the, basically the rule that they cannot go within two pay grades of the director?
That is what we've.
We set that?
Yes, that is what we've decided because we have division heads, department heads, office heads, and we're trying to make sure that there is a logical progression that goes down. Initially, there was the thought that department heads might fall over multiple grades, not just two. The decision was made this year to make, to only have department heads fall into 13 and 14, but in future years, we might see a much wider range there, and that might free up more grades for others. But right now, because we have the department heads, then division heads, then, then others, we feel that this is the structure that is needed within the city.
I'm just tugging on this a little more because it feels a little arbitrary, so I'm trying to figure out, you know, is there data behind, like, why that number? Why that chasm between the pay grades?
It's a great question. I honestly don't recall the discussion. I'm thinking back to 2023, because I believe that's when we made the decision. It was under Mayor Hamilton. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Other questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Is this the appropriate time to move Amendment One, which is just a correction of a typographical error?
We can do that. I had a question, kind of pulling on the same thread, though, so maybe, should we do that first? Okay. So I'll go ahead and ask my question, kind of pulling on that same thread of, like, wage compression, because in the Planning Department specifically, it's like you raised some things, but not some of those intermediate, like, director kind of positions. So is there concern right now about, like, wage compression specifically in that department?
Not specifically in that department. There is across the city as a whole, yes. I mean, definitely within planning, we have wage compression, but we have, we are seeing that across every department.
Okay. And I had one other follow-up from something you said, responding to Councilmember Assari, about $4.5 million out of the $6 million already allocated, and I know that ASME is also being worked on, but does any of the ASME stuff come out of that $6 million, or is that a completely separate pot?
That's a great question. It's my understanding that they may all be coming from the same limited funding pools, but again, I don't have great knowledge as to the funding sources behind this.
Okay, do we want to? I'll step in to say that $6 million. If you could introduce yourself formally, that'd be great, thanks.
Sorry, Shar Paycheck, Director of Human Resources. It is my understanding that those monies would be separate, and so the $6 million is for the implementation for the salary ordinance, and then when we are through with or in the process of conducting the ASME salary study, that would be a separate request.
Okay, great.
Did that answer your question?
That does answer my question, though I'm also kind of looking at Deputy Mayor over there with a face looking like she might want to weigh in on that.
I'm happy to add any clarification, but go ahead.
Deputy Mayor Knapp, so a couple things. One is that we still have more work process, work processes to go through for departments that have done changes to their org chart, where they might have reporting structure or job description changes. So yes, we've spent four, roughly four and a half million so far, and we still have more changes to go. And we also have not yet accounted for previous tenure in our staff. So part of our tenure-based system, the goal would be if you are hiring someone for a position that requires, let's say, five years' experience, and someone comes in with 20, you don't necessarily want to start that person at step one. But we aren't currently implementing that for new hires, because we haven't done that for our current staff yet. So the goal is to complete first all of the org chart changes, job description updates, recalibrate all of those, then we would have the chance to go through and look at, okay, if so-and-so has been in this job for 10 years, but before that, they had 30 years of experience, how should that impact their tenure? And that would then allow us, as we hire new people, to make those adjustments for them as well. So that, that pot of money does need to go to some other places, but the ASME money would be separate and would be in 2026, not this year.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, other questions, or should we do Amendment One? Amendment One? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. It's just about the same thing, so if, that's okay. I just wanted to sort of ask this question. Okay, so people, job, job positions are getting reevaluated based on their responsibilities from their job description. And so then, if we have a director that is a 13, and then we have the next person having job responsibilities, that would make them a 12. They can't be a 12. Is that right? So like, if their director was a 14, they could be a 12, but because their director is a 13, they would only get compensated for the work of an 11, when in a different department, that person doing the same job could be getting compensated as a 13 or a 12.
I don't know that it's that simple. Again, the initial recommendation was to go up to 17 grades, and with the 17 grades, we could have had department heads fall over the course of four or five different grades, and that would have allowed more mixture. But the administration this year decided not to go that route. We decided to fix all of the department heads at 13 and 14 and to allow division heads to come in at 12. So that's what sets the barrier. We do not feel that an assistant director should be the same level as a division head.
Okay, it does seem difficult that people could be doing the same work in different departments and not compensated equally. I guess I just, like, just weighing in on what Councilmember Daley was saying. It does feel arbitrary, and I guess I hope moving forward, we could take another look at that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there other questions around the same thread before we introduce Amendment One? All right, seeing none, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'd like to move Amendment One to ordinance 2025-03. And again, this is just to correct a typo that I caught this afternoon, and Attorney Kulak is displaying on the text of the amendment on the screen. It's just in section three where.
Let's get a second first before you explain it, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
So in section three, when it talks about changing the project manager positions from three positions to two positions, the text actually says two to three, and it should say three to two. So that's, that's basically it?
Oh.
So the actual line is correct in the current text, but the paragraph above it is incorrect.
Thank you. I, I see that. Does anybody have any questions about this change? I think that we have to go to members of the public. If anybody wants to comment specifically about this typographical error for Amendment One, this is not the time to comment on the entire ordinance, just upon Amendment One. Does anybody want to speak to typographical errors? Please approach the podium and raise your hand on Zoom. Anybody going once? Going twice? Okay, back to council for any council comments on this typographical error? Seeing no comments from out there, I'll say thank you to Councilmember Piedmont Smith for, for catching that, that small notation. And then, will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment One? And then will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment 1 to Ordinance 2025-03? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That amendment passes 9-0. So now we are back to the ordinance as amended to either continue first-round questions or if anybody has second-round questions. I do have one more. There are some elimination of positions in the Engineering Department. Are those positions currently filled by anyone?
They are filled, but these positions are being eliminated to create a different position that those staff members would be moved into. It's basically like a reorganization of the department a little bit.
Okay, so those added positions up there in the Engineering Department are basically going to, so the eliminated positions are going to turn into those positions?
Correct.
And the people currently employed are qualified, et cetera, and interested in those new positions as they're in?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and go to members of the public for public comments on Ordinance 2025-03 as amended. If anybody in chambers would like to comment on these salary changes, please approach the podium, and you'll have up to three minutes. If there's any members on Zoom who would like to comment on this ordinance, please use the Reactions tab to raise your hand or send a chat message to the host. You guys are really chatty here this evening in chambers. Anybody on Zoom yet?
No.
And nobody making any moves in chambers. I guess we are back to council with any last questions or comments. Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate the work that's gone into this proposal and the whole compensation updates over time, and I will support it. A few things continue to concern me. One, and this is kind of tangential, but there's a grade-one position in the salary ordinance amendment. So I should mention that by most accounting of living wage, our grades 1, 2, and 3 do not pay living wages at significant portions of those ranges. I've discussed this with my colleague, Councilmember Ruff, and others. We have a living wage ordinance, but it's, was set at $10 about 20 years ago and raises with Consumer Price Index. Consumer Price Index is, of course, national. It doesn't reflect local conditions, housing costs, et cetera. And there's a number of reputable calculators out there that actually do take those factors into account, and a living wage in Bloomington is something like $40,000 to $42,000 a year. I've been preliminarily working on some legislation to address that shortcoming, but I thought I shouldn't let the opportunity pass to mention it, and that's a challenge I have with the, the bottom ends of the, the pay grades for positions. I think, wrapping my head around some of the discussion around the division head versus assistant director thing, I was looking back at the salary ordinance from last year, and I don't think that distinction kind of holds up. We have a deputy controller who's a grade 12, a senior project engineer who's a grade 12, an assistant director of operations who's a grade 12 in IT, an assistant director for enterprise applications who's a grade 12 in IT, and a city attorney who's a grade 12 in legal department. None of those folks are department heads, nor any of them division heads. I think when we talked about some of the issues with the Planning Department in the fall, what was clear at that time is that there also were mistakes that had been made, misunderstandings of the structure, and some misunderstandings about comparables and what the positions were. I think one way to tackle that was through job description changes. I don't have high confidence that it's entirely addressed the issue. And there was no mention of some of those, some of those errors that are well documented in the factual record from that period of time in October. I think, you know, it may have been a mistake not to consider more significant structural changes that were needed in the context of updating salary ordinances. I think the phased approach has led to problems that I think could have been avoided, including sort of this extreme sense of urgency at the last minute before deadlines last year. And I just think through all of this, over the last six months, I've really lost confidence in the work process and how we're approaching compensation. And then specifically, I also lost trust in and respect for the administration based on how they conducted themselves in the fall. So again, I do appreciate these modest steps forward, but I've lost confidence in the overall framework and our implementation, which is disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council comments?
May I respond?
That was a comment, not a question, so thank you, though. Other council comments or questions? Okay, I think then we're ready to vote on Ordinance 2025-03. If the clerk would call the roll. Right, as amended. Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. That passes 9-0. Moving on.
I move Ordinance 2025-01 be introduced and read by the clerk and title and synopsis, by title and synopsis only. Forgive me.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to read Ordinance 2025-01. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-01 to amend the district ordinance and, it's catching. Let me try that again. Ordinance 2025-01 to amend the district ordinance and preliminary plan of a 3.2-acre planned unit development, the Curry PUD, in order to amend the workforce housing contribution regarding 105 South Pete Ellis Drive. The synopsis is as follows. "Ordinance 2025-01 would amend the district ordinance and preliminary plan for the Curry PUD to allow the workforce housing commitment to be met through a payment to the Housing Development Fund instead of through the inclusion of workforce housing units on-site."
Thank you.
I move Ordinance 2025-01 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Who do we have? Looks like we have Development Services Manager, Jackie Scanlon.
That's right. Development Services Manager Jackie Scanlon. We have, this is third reading, but I will briefly go over what we're doing here tonight. This is for the Curry PUD at Pete Ellis and Longview. It was originally approved in 2020, and the original approval included the requirement for affordable housing units to be located in the development on-site. And so this, but this particular petition came in before the 2019, 2020 update of the Unified Development Ordinance, Title 20. And so the agreement was worked out with an eye toward where we thought we were going with workforce housing agreements, but those had not yet been, those had not yet been codified. So in the approved district ordinance, the petitioner proposed workforce housing to comprise 15% of the unit bedroom count, and a zoning commitment was created. They did amend the PUD for some other changes later in 2021, but did not alter the workforce housing agreement. In June of '22, the council amended the UDO to make payment in lieu an option for incentives more viable than they were under the 2020 version of the UDO. So this particular petitioner has stated that they have had issues filling the 52 bedrooms that are 15% of their bedrooms on-site. They've been working with the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department for, I'd say, more than a year on, working on how to improve that process for themselves. And then they have decided to, they came to the conclusion that they would like to come back and ask to amend their PUD in order to be able to have the payment in lieu option available to them instead of the units on-site. So to change their commitment from units on-site to payment in lieu. So at the time, the contribution was, as stated in the administrative manual, as set by Hand, was $20,000 per bedroom for 15% of the bedrooms in the development. Again, that equaled 52 bedrooms on this site. So using that formula to come up with a dollar amount for payment in lieu, it would be $1,040,000 toward the Housing Development Fund. So when we were here last time, there was some confusion. There were a couple of documents floating around, a couple of agreements, but one zoning commitment has been prepared. You aren't approving a zoning commitment, but it's in your packet if you'd like to review, and we do think that that's going to be the final draft and has been signed off on by the petitioner as well. So I can answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there questions from council members about this? No questions from council members? Councilmember Flaherty?
I have some questions. Staff and petitioner both, when we heard this last, about, kind of trying to compare the proposed payment in lieu versus the value of the current zoning commitment. And I got some numbers, and I was a little confused about the, the exact details, but because there were kind of a couple of different numbers for 120% and for lower, you know, compared to market rate. But considering it's a, you know, a zoning commitment that I think lasts for like another 95 years, it, it seems like in most scenarios that I'm looking at, the value of that far outweighs the, the value of the payment in lieu. And initially, I was thinking like a net present value calculation that used like a discount rate for inflation was necessary to make that comparison, and it still looked like the current commitment was more favorable. But I actually don't think a discount rate's appropriate because the, the value increases over time as rents increase over time. So it's, what I'm getting at is, has staff like come to a conclusion about that, either Hand or Planning? Because it seems to me that, that it's just, the payment in lieu is not as valuable as the current commitment in terms of affordable housing impact.
Sure.
It might be in the near term because of the power of the spending power right now, but over the, you know?
Yeah. I think I'll, I'll let, Housing and Neighborhood Development staff is here and let them answer that question. I will say that I think the way that it was kind of described to us was that the 50, they don't have 52, they haven't had 52 at all since they've been open. They've had 25 is where they were at when we were at Plan Commission. And that we don't have, or like, how we would, how we would ensure that we were going to get that 52 over time, how can we go about doing that? When we started with the onsite units in the 2019, 2020 update, which this petition actually predates, as I said, I don't know that the administration did a good job of setting in place, you know, how we were going to track those, track those different petitions. So I think from an administration and enforcement standpoint, I'm not sure that there's a, a good long-range plan for making sure that those 52 can actually be filled for the next 94 years. So I think that's kind of how, when we, when the discussions were happening about changing this, it was between the petitioner and Hand. But when they talked to us about, you know, going forward with it, I think that, that was kind of the impression that I had about some of the reasoning. I will also say, and I mentioned briefly, and obviously it's totally up to this body to change this, but the, you know, in June of '22, we changed it and made it, made it an option for anyone who was using the incentives to do payment in lieu. And if this had come forward with payment in lieu, would we have said, no, we want you to do on-site at that time? I don't think we would have as a department, but you all may have. But we haven't done that yet for any projects that have tried to do payment in lieu. We haven't said, we'd refer you to do this other option, just as a city. But yeah, so those are my comments, but I think Hand will probably have something more specific. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have a representative from Hand who wants to? Thank you. If you could introduce yourself for the record.
Anna Killian Hansen, Director, Housing and Neighborhood Development. I don't disagree with you that we need to examine the long-term aspect of these workforce housing units. However, any developer that comes to us and wants to trigger that incentive does have the option to either do the payment in lieu or provide the workforce housing units. So I, I understand where you're coming from. For 2025, we have increased the dollar amount for each unit from 20,000 to 30,000. Apparently, I'm only allowed to change that every January, and that was something that we inherited last year, was the $20,000 rate. So we just kind of had to stick with it. We've been working with the petitioner for over a year now on that. I think what we are up against and what we're realizing is that we have a short-term problem and we have a long-term problem. So in the short term, we have a number of units that are sitting vacant that we're unable to fill. We have worked with the petitioner to try to get bodies into those units. We know we have a housing problem with those vacant units. We need to get people into them. So this is the quickest solution that we have come to. I'm not saying that there's not another solution that we might be able to agree to, but I think for the future, we really need to examine the developer incentives and, and maybe get them more in line to what you're saying.
Thank you. Other questions about this petition at this time? I have one before we go to second round, Councilmember Flaherty. This went to third reading, and I think this is a question for our counsel attorney. This went to third reading because there were contract negotiations still ongoing around, not so much the ordinance itself, I don't think, but the zoning commitment and the language of those contracts. And I just want you to speak to that for just a minute, if you could, if you are satisfied with the contracts as they've been written. I think, and the most recent amended version of that went out this afternoon or this morning in a, in an amended packet. So are you satisfied with the way these contracts are written right now?
Yes, the most recent version of the zoning commitment was emailed and distributed out earlier today. I know the history is confusing. As Jackie indicated, at one point, originally, there was a payment in lieu agreement attached to the, as a part of Attachment A to the ordinance, and then later, it was decided to transfer information from that agreement into the zoning commitment, which then would be recorded. So there no longer was a reason to have this payment agreement, payment in lieu agreement at that point. The zoning commitment has been, provisions have been added to it with respect to the binding nature of the agreement, payment terms, timing of payment, and then, of course, adding the petitioner's commitment with respect to the renewal of leases, existing leases with respect to workforce housing, as stated in that zoning commitment.
Okay, great. But we don't actually approve the zoning commitment?
No, no. It's not necessary because Plan Commission forwarded the favorable recommendation along with three conditions. Condition number two was the zoning commitment.
Okay.
A document that then would be signed upon approval.
Right. And, and has the petitioner seen that most recent draft, and are they satisfied with that language as well? I'm seeing nods from the crowd. I don't know if somebody wants to go on the record and introduce yourself to respond to that.
Hi, good evening. Tom Jason with the petitioner, SPCW Bloomington JV. We have seen that final zoning commitment and are on board with it.
Other first-round questions before we go back to Councilmember Flaherty for a second Councilmember Flaherty?
I guess I was looking for more information, too, about the enforceability kind of question that Ms. Scanlon got to, which is, is there, I appreciate all the good faith the petitioner shown in terms of working diligently with the, with the city to try to fill units and address that. And I know progress has been made. Am I understanding correctly that there's essentially no teeth for enforcement on the city side with respect to- city side with respect to committed, you know, affordable units in buildings? That there's no way to say, you're not filling them, so you owe some money instead or something? You know, or we'll find folks to fill them through a portal or you know what?
That I know I was going to have to answer a question about. But I think for planning, obviously, I would have to look at the wording of the original approval. Because obviously, we can send notices of violation if you're not in compliance with an approval that you have from the department or from Plan Commission. So I'd have to look at the wording. It would just be difficult, you know, in a situation where they're working with the, you know, Department of the Administration, and that department is saying like they are doing everything they can and they cannot fill these rooms, or you know, fill these units, then for us to do enforcement might be difficult. Is kind of what I was saying.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions before we go to public comment? All right, let's go ahead and go to public comment then on Ordinance 2025-01. If there's any member in chambers who would like to make a comment on this, please approach the podium. If you are online, please raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a chat message to the host. We've been really chatty so far here in chambers, so I'm expecting... What I'm getting, is there anybody on Zoom that has expressed an interest in commenting?
Yes, we have one. Kevin, and the timer has left the meeting. We're trying to get it back in the meeting. I'll be using my phone to time it.
Okay, great. Kevin, if you want to introduce yourself for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm Kevin Keough, and my question is, I get so frustrated listening to these meetings when you're talking about the affordability issue. I just, why in the world can't they just lower the rent? It seems like it's an issue for the community that there is a real need, especially for those, I would think, working at the hospital, which is so close by. I just don't understand why in the world you can't meet that sweet point where the units are truly affordable? Or is that the issue? I just get so confused. It's, I recently read an article too about Indiana University has surplus rental homes, and the same question goes, well, why don't they lower the rents? So anyway, that's my comment, and thank you.
Anybody in chambers, last call? Okay, council members, are there any questions? Let's do questions first, if any came up, as opposed to comments. I would like to remind council members that we did change procedures last year, that we have five minutes for closing comments and then two-minute rebuttal if we want it. I'm not sure that those timing things have always been up on the board, but let's, questions? Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, you know, sometimes members of the public hit the nail on the head with the most basic question, and so I will repeat the question that was asked, and I'm sure there's probably a simple answer, but why can't we just make the petitioner lower the rents on these units to get them rented?
I'm not sure who wants to take that.
Who is "we"? So like, who, maybe you can do it, I don't, I'm not sure. That would be a question for your council. Like, can you, can council do that? I don't know if we can, like as the Planning and Transportation Department can dictate that they have lower rents. I don't think we can.
I guess I mean the city.
Yeah.
The city in any way.
Yeah, I'm not sure, only speaking for us, that we can do that, but I think it might be a good question to ask the petitioner, maybe you did last time, and I'm just not recalling, you know, what have they done to try to, who have they targeted? I don't know the answer to the question. Sorry. Thanks.
Anybody else want to take a crack at it?
May I speak quickly? Anna Killian Hansen, Hand again. Hey, in regards to that, we have worked with the petitioner to reduce the rents, we have. But one thing that you need to keep in mind about the workforce housing units is that it's not just about rent amount. When they're qualified, they have to be working at least 35 hours a week. They cannot be on their parents' FAFSA, so they can't be a student working at IU and only on that. They have to be independent. So there's a lot of criteria that go along with these units. And I think that I've mentioned this before, but when you rent by the bedroom, when they're furnished, they're student-centric, in my opinion, and they're difficult to lease, especially when you're targeting that 80% to 120% of the area meeting in income. They have reduced the AMIs. They've tried to get more people in there at a lower rent amount, but it's not just the rent amount. There are other criteria as well for those units.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I mean, I guess I would appreciate hearing from the petitioner. As I do recall, when this was approved in 2020, that it was discussed not as a student housing development. And so to, you know, hear that it's, can't be rented to students, that doesn't carry a whole lot of weight with me. So if you could speak to why not reduce the rents further to get these rented?
Sure. So our original workforce housing commitment was at the 100% and 120% AMI levels. And after talking with Hand, which our first conversations were before we even opened, but after a few months of just checking where our progress was at and having limited success, we met with them and ultimately agreed to lower a majority of our target rents to the 80% AMI levels. And in 2023, that was, we signed 17 out of the 52 units. And then at the time of the Plan Commission meeting in December of 2024, we had only been able to sign 25. So reducing our rents only resulted in a small increase in the number of leases that we were able to sign. And as it relates to, or to try and answer your other question about the student-centric nature of this property, yes, we do rent by the bed. And, but our unit mix is largely consistent with conventional market rate housing. And we do believe in our results show it, that we have a wide range of individuals there, ranging from young professionals. And yes, there are students, but there's graduate students and nursing students that have been target market since the beginning. But we don't shy away from the fact that we have students living there. And we do rent by the bed because it is attractive to students, but also to any individuals who are looking to live in a roommate situation.
Thank you.
Other questions, council members, sorry?
Maybe to pull a little bit further on that same thread, I had asked at our last hearing, reading, you know, what alternatives sort of exist, right? Like what, and you know, so we were sort of looking at that in terms of what we could do immediately, but thinking in the long term. Because if I understand correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, what we're saying is that it's a combination of the constraints associated with the AMI and the requirements that a tenant would have to meet in order to qualify for that lower rent. And then just general cost associated with you building things. So like, what is it that we could do in the long term if, for developers like you to lower, I mean, as the commenter said, I mean, if we want to provide lower-cost housing just across the board, like what are things that we could do?
That's a great question, and I appreciate it. I think the biggest challenge that, or one of the big challenges that we had here, which Director Killian Hansen or Ms. Scanlon touched on, was that this zoning commitment and the general terms of the workforce housing agreement were committed to before the program in its entirety was generated. And so I think the biggest thing from our perspective is just clarity and a clear path of what the requirements are.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I don't know who to direct us to, maybe Ms. Scanlon. I wonder, so this was approved in 2020. It took a year or so to build out, I'm sure, or two. So it probably went on the market, I mean, the rental units in, what, 2021, '22? And it was described at the Plan Commission meeting as well as here tonight, that, you know, it began with a 17, 17 of the 52 units rented, and then it was adjusted per AMI. And it, we got to 52, nearly half the units rented. So that's an, you know, that's an increase of, I don't know, 15%. Are we, maybe this is a trend, maybe this is premature, to simply say, throw up our hands and say, well, let's just give up on this in terms of affordable housing. And there was also an interesting comment that was made, I noticed in B-Square Bulletin, where a local developer said, that he said, the whole building approach worked for him in terms of affordable housing, but a mixed, mixed affordable unit with market rate doesn't. Now, that's probably a separate question, obviously, but okay, are we giving up too soon? That's my first question. We should give more time. Why not? I mean, it hasn't been that long. And the second one is, I don't want to surrender the fact that we can have people who need affordable housing and sequester them into a separate development. I want people to be able to live in communities where you have different incomes and you don't have this stratification. So I feel like, in a sense, I'm giving up that approach, and I'm also doing it prematurely. You see what I'm saying? What's your, what's your idea?
Oh, it's so tough, because, I mean, I think that all makes sense. And for us, for Planning and Transportation and the processes that we have to go through, this is the process for them to go through to ask you all if they can change it. And I think the information that we based our recommendation to Plan Commission on, and then they based their recommendation to you on, was that they had been working with Hand for quite some time, and that, you know, Hand is, they are experts in what they're doing, and that they just feel like this is the better option for the city and what benefits the most people. And so that's why we made our recommendation, along with the fact that it did change, you know, two and a half years later. And if this PUD had come in in 2022, would this body have said, you know, we're going to require onsite and not payment in lieu, if they had originally requested payment in lieu? But I think all of your questions are valid, you know, all of your points are valid. And I think part of the reason why, I don't know if you remember when we first put in the incentives for workforce housing, the old administrator, the old mayor, I mean, his priority was onsite first. And so when payment in lieu, even though payment in lieu was an option in the 2019-2020 original UDO update, it was difficult to do, and people couldn't do it. And that's why we later, we later made it easier to do, because the more projects we did where we were getting kind of the one-off, two or three, or you know, four to 10 units on a site, that the actual administration of that, I think, was more difficult than maybe we had anticipated. So I think that, I think what you're describing is a valid goal, and that's what you guys kind of have to decide if, you know, that's the question ahead of you. And Hand may have a more specific answer.
I don't want to leave out Hand, because they've been doing all this work, and could we have her point of view? Thank you.
Hi, Anna again, from Hand. So I just want to go back to the fact that we have problems with a lot of workforce housing units that are online right now. One complex in particular has 140 vacant units right now. So we have a housing problem. I'm trying to get people housed now, not in two years. With that payment in lieu, we can take it, we can house those that are most at need, we can target AMIs that are lower than 80% to 120%. So again, short-term, long-term problem. Short-term, we could use the money, get people housed right now. Long-term, let's look at those developer incentives. Let's make them more in line with what we want to see.
What's the current balance of our housing fund?
Of our housing fund?
Yeah.
I think it's a little over $4 million.
Okay.
Councilmember Daly? Thank you. Thank you all. Everybody for being here. Actually, Director Killian Hansen, I think I'm going to direct my question to you. And just in general, you know, my kind of comment is, you know, I understand the hesitation here, like it does almost feel, you know, like we're giving up too soon, as one of my colleagues stated, and, you know, it's disappointing, right, that our plan didn't work and that we weren't able to fill these units, and it's frustrating that they're sitting there open. But I think maybe it would help if, if Director Killian Hansen, you could give us maybe a rundown of how that money would be helpful, specifically how we could apply it, because it does feel like, yeah, we're getting this one-time payment, and in the short term, it's something, but long-term, if we were filling these units, that would have been more beneficial.
Right. So I can point you back to what we're doing with our 2025 budget, which is our Housing Development Fund is going to be used for some pilot programs, so tenant-based rental assistance to help supplement unaffordable rents and keep people housed. We are also doing eviction prevention with that money. We are also doing an interest rate buy-down to help encourage market turnover and increase more units that are available for ownership. We're also investing in projects throughout the community to develop more affordable housing. So we're cording covenants on those projects to keep the AMIs where we want them to be. So last year, we did a veteran-based seven-unit project. You know, there's a lot of different things that we're doing with it. But I do want to also point out that workforce housing does, what we're finding, is that workforce housing doesn't always fail. What we're seeing is successes in smaller batches. So we have a number of projects where there's maybe 16 units in the building, and I agree with Mr. Rallo's reference, I do want mixed affordability. I don't just want to target or sequester certain AMIs in certain buildings. We want mixed. But when they're smaller buildings, smaller projects, they're more successful. We haven't had any problems with compliance. But when they're larger and larger buildings and more of the buildings that are rented by the bedroom or furnished that may be perceived as student housing, those are where we're going to have problems, and we're seeing those problems. So does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you so much. Director Killian Hansen, please come back.
Anna, Hand again. And one more thing I forgot about was that we do down payment and closing cost assistance with the Housing Development Fund as well, so.
Cool. Thank you all for being here. In your opinion, if students who are on their parents' FAFSA were to qualify for these programs, do you think that the quotas would be more easily filled?
I do, I do. And that was actually one of the things that we've attempted to work on with a couple of different complexes, to say, okay, could we reduce the working requirement? So right now, it says you have to work 35 hours a week. Could we take it down to 30? Could we play and say, okay, if you are a student, could you qualify? How could we make this work? So we've explored it to a certain degree. I do think that it would be easier to qualify for, but we're getting a lot of criticism that all we're building is multifamily housing for students. So we have to be careful.
Are there other questions? Are we on a, you haven't had a question since the public comment period, right? Is that right? Okay, okay. Are there any first-round questions before, okay, Councilmember Ruff?
This is for our Director of Hand. Of that 4 million, roughly, that we have in the fund, the programs and initiatives you just listed that currently we're doing, that Hand's doing and is involved in, how much of that 4 million would you say is sort of, sort of committed to or sort of needed for the initiatives that you just kind of went through? And how much is really available to do something totally different with?
Well, each year, you guys allow us to determine how much of that Housing Development Fund we will we will use in our budget. So I will need to look at the exact number, but I want to say that it was an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar increase from last year. So it's around a million dollars or so that we have earmarked for this year. But as projects are rolling in, we do have a number of projects, I believe, that are discussing the payment in lieu that will go into that fund. One of the other things that we're exploring is creating a housing, a revolving loan fund, so that we can continually try to rebuild those reserves for projects such as this.
Can I have one follow-up kind of to that?
Sure.
So this, the project that has, you said, one hundred and forty? Hundred and twenty vacant units? I guess, can you reveal which project we're talking about?
It's the standard.
Okay, thank you.
And I will just follow that up with, I want to thank the Council Office for their detailed review of our zoning commitments. Zoning commitments have historically had a number of problems that I've become aware of. The standard zoning commitment indicates that they only have to market their workforce housing units for six months. And after that, they can turn them over to market rate. So some of these zoning commitments have some undesirable clauses and also are very difficult to enforce, because when does that six months start?
Thank you.
Thank you. Other first-round questions? Councilmember Sari, would you like to?
Thank you. Director Killian Hansen, sorry. Could you explain, and then actually also for the petitioner, so a dual question here. I recall at our last reading, the petitioner stated that there was demand, but at a different AMI level, right? And I know that within, again, I'm trying to get at the long-term things, and I'm sorry that the petitioners have to sit through this. But that there was a particular demand, I think, at a lower AMI that they were sort of able to meet. And I know that right now, we have this sort of eighty to one hundred and twenty. And in that context, the incentive would be go towards one hundred and twenty and so on. I understand that. If we were to make a change, which we've set the resolution to ask HAND to introduce that change to the UDO, HAND or Planning, excuse me for getting those details wrong, to introduce the ordinance to reduce the AMI, like, why don't we set AMI to like sixty, or fifty, or something like that? Like, what's the, what would be the impact of doing something like that? And then the sort of follow-on question is, what other things do we, as a city, have control over? Like, when we're talking about requirements, for example, of people who qualify for workforce housing, are we talking about, is this a HUD requirement? Or is this, are we talking about a requirement that we've put in the UDO?
We've put that into the UDO. And so typically, there's a lot of subsidies out there for eighty percent AMI and below. So I believe what the intention, and I don't know, I wasn't here at that time, was that the workforce housing target would hit the AMIs that don't get a lot of attention or subsidies, and that would be the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI. As we know, our wages are not in line with our housing prices currently. So we really need to shift down and below eighty percent. Eighty percent and below is really our workforce, so, in Bloomington. So, yeah, I do think that we could, but I think that that was the thought process, was that there's other subsidies at eighty and below.
And then just to confirm, that is in process. I mean, that is something that we are working on.
That is correct.
That's right.
Thank you. Did you want to hear from the petitioner on that as well?
Yes, please, yeah. Particularly around that, because I just forget what you had said last week about where you found the demand.
Sure. So of the twenty-five leases that we had signed, we had worked with HAND to qualify individuals under eighty percent AMI, and seventeen of them fell under eighty percent.
Thank you. And you have no requirement to go under the eighty percent? You were doing that in, towards that question of us saying, well, why don't you just lower the rents? I mean, that was you moving beyond the requirement in your current PUD. Is that correct?
Right. We're just doing the best we can to fill the units.
Thank you.
Thank you. I actually had written down a question that I'd forgotten to ask earlier, which I think is for Jackie Scanlon. There's been a couple messages, or a couple comments about the idea that if the payment in lieu program had been in existence when they first got this approval, then it probably would have been approved. But that went into existence in 2022, I think. And we also changed requirements for PUDs. So under new guidelines, would this have even qualified as a PUD? Because I guess I'm wondering, like, whether it's even a relevant concept that, like, well, payment in lieu didn't exist then, but you know what? Like, PUD requirements were different then, too, so we can't just...
Yeah. So payment in lieu came in in the 2019, 2020 update, but it was very, quite restricted. So yes, this property, yes, they would have had to do the current PUD requirements, which does require fifteen percent. But, you know, it's in the qualifying standards, which are allowed to be, you are allowed to let, they can be, I don't, I'm going to say the wrong word, like amended or something like, those are the things. Those are the qualifying standards to be a PUD, but the way the language is written, you all can basically waive them.
Would they have met the other qualifying standards that exist for PUDs right now?
Potentially, because when it was, when it came through, well, size was already in. It was under the old PUD rules as well. When it came through, a number of the council members at that time, I mean, there was something like eleven reasonable conditions. So a number of the reasonable conditions related to sustainable development that we now kind of see, that the sustainable, I'm sorry, that the reasonable conditions point toward, or I'm sorry, that the qualifying standards point toward, those were put in as reasonable conditions because council knew that was coming. So some, you know, it's hard to say exactly, but some of the things, I do think that they could have qualified or been close. I'm not sure exactly.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we go to comments? All right, let's go to council member comments. And just as a reminder, we have five minutes, or up to five minutes for our comments. And then if anybody wants a two-minute rebuttal after other comments, that is what was written into our rules last year. So who would like to comment? Councilmember Sari. Councilmember Rosenbarger, then. I think I didn't see your hand pass Councilmember Zuluk.
I'm sorry.
Go for it.
Thanks. I'm sorry. I apologized. I don't think I needed to, you know. A couple bullet points on this. I just like the idea of setting this as a precedent that if units don't get filled, a developer can come back, and we can adjust and take those affordable units out of the property. I don't know what we're going to do about the twenty-five households that do, in fact, live there. I do feel like, I understand that they can stay there through the end of their lease, but then we are displacing folks who are choosing to live there in the Rolado. I guess I know we talked about making changes to this, but it would have to go back through the whole entire process. I don't know, I guess they don't know why we didn't just keep twenty-five of the units affordable. What? Okay.
I know this isn't.
The timer, as a clarification, though, just because-
Councilmember Rosenbarger, you brought that up. It was written in that those particular tenants can continue to renew their leases if they so choose to.
I thought they could only-
So we, at Plan Commission, we added that.
Lease. Okay, sorry. When this did come to council, it was marketed and proposed to us as workforce housing, and the hospital was moving, and medical offices were moving to that space. And I think it's fine that a developer creates housing to attract any person looking for housing in Bloomington. We need housing of all types, whether it be student housing, workforce housing, you know, luxury housing, homes, condos, everything. We need everything, so there's not a lack of need. And I think we will always be criticized for building more student housing. I mean, we hear it all the time. I've heard it before I was ever on council, and I get emails on a regular basis that would say that, you know, students don't need more places to live, but they do. And they also need affordable places to live, just like a lot of us. So for me, I just can't support this. I am really afraid of the idea that, you know, we work this into the plan, and then we can come back and say, like, we're going to change it. I think there are options out there that, you know, the developer is setting the rates, so you're setting the market rate, and you are setting the affordable rate. And, I don't know, I rent a house, too, and sometimes I lower the rate to get someone in it more often. So I think that is just also a supply and demand thing. I guess that's it. I also think what Councilmember Rallo said, I very much agree with as well, that mixed-income housing is very much needed. And I dislike the idea of splitting out our affordable housing. And I very much encourage and support when we have the mixed-income developments. And so I do like that we have this in the development. Thanks.
Thank you. I would like to note that I've received some messages from our attorneys that our timer app is stubbornly not working again. So the timer is being kept on a phone over there. So, Councilmember Sari.
Thank you so much. I mean, I share a lot of the concerns, I think, that have been raised in, both in the two times that we've discussed this, you know, particularly as Councilmember Flaherty pointed out, and as we pointed out several weeks ago around the sort of value, how we made the calculation for twenty thousand dollars per unit, and so on and so forth. That being said, I think that, you know, at the end of the day, this is the rules that are in the UDO. They could have started at the beginning by just paying in lieu. I don't think the rules are right. I don't think that they're sort of designed correctly. But I am concerned about us also setting precedent that sort of says that, you know, we sort of renegotiate things that are on paper. And in council, I think that developers who come to work here should know that, you know, we follow our rules. And so people need to have consistency. They need to have a sort of certain set of expectations. It's the reason why, in all of my questioning, I'm trying to figure out, like, what do we do in the long term to change these type outcomes? And I know that that's work that so many on this dais have been working on for so long and continue to work on now. And so, but just sort of in respect to the general environment and the business environment and the partnership environment that we offer here in Bloomington, I will be voting to support this, as much as I, you know, just, I don't think it's the best deal. But again, I also would like to echo what Director Killian Hansen said, which is that I think that it does provide some immediate benefits to us that we can, you know, reinvest in other ways. But again, I think just a call to action for all of us to hopefully put some quick changes in place, particularly at the UDO around some of these questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, really critical piece of this to me is considering the long-term effects of this change, and tried to ask some questions about that. I appreciate that Director Killian Hansen noted that we do have short-term needs that are very urgent and important, and I agree. But we're making a long-term decision with, you know, ninety-four years of implications. I asked some details about pricing, and so just to take some conservative assumptions, it was mentioned last time that a studio is thirteen hundred dollars a month market rate, or eleven hundred and eighty-eight dollars a month for one hundred and twenty percent AMI. That is the top of the AMI possible. That's one hundred and twelve dollars a month, times twelve months, that's one thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars per year, per unit. Even just half the units, twenty-five, that's thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars a year. Over ninety-four years, that's three point two million dollars, over three times the payment in lieu amount. Again, I think actually you don't need to use a discount rate in considering that future value, because that one hundred and twelve dollar a month subsidy is going to increase over time, because rental rates go up over time. If we actually got all fifty-two units, that would go to six point, over six million in total value. So we may be giving up something in the neighborhood of two to five million dollars in value over the full range of time we're talking about. I think there are other factors here for me, too. I don't, you know, I was here when this got approved. Also remember the conversations about the hospital site going in. This is close proximity for walking, biking, on a transit line that goes directly there. There's no shortage of folks at IU Health and at the hospital making relatively low wages who would qualify in these categories. And again, just share the desire of my colleagues, too, that ideally, we should be trying to co-locate affordable units with market-rate units within larger buildings and within neighborhoods. And so I guess ultimately, it seems like, it seems solvable to me. I grant that there's been challenges. You know, again, I very much appreciate all the work the petitioner has done to address some of these challenges and even go below what their commitment was to get units rented. If that's the better approach, to have twenty-five units at eighty percent instead of, you know, fifty-two committed at one hundred and twenty percent, then maybe we should formalize that change, if we're going to formalize something. And I think I would be more in favor of that. Finally, I do agree that this is not an ideal forum to be talking about these things or, you know, working on it. But, you know, the payment in lieu option, I think, was non-available at that time. And what they committed to, or I think it was not yet phased in. But even if it was, I mean, what was committed to is what was committed to. So the certainty that's desirable and sticking, you know, consistency sake and sticking with that, I think, is just to follow what was committed and figure out how to partner to solve it. And it seems like the city might be needing to play a more active role than it anticipated, including with regard to staff or hosting a portal or something like that, working with community organizations, employers like at the hospital, IU Health, to get people placed who are, you know, well-suited and have the need for a unit that's more affordable for them. So I'm going to be voting no tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Zuluk?
So I will be voting for this, primarily because I am not a fan of holding other people accountable for something that is pretty clearly a direct result of our policy failure. And a policy failure that I think is a product of attempting to bar students from other forms of housing. While people may want less multifamily homes, the reality is that if we're failing to fill these quotas, those housing units aren't going to anyone if they're left empty. And the students who would need workforce housing units are not the same people who can afford the market rate. And as a city, it's long past time that we stop viewing the students in Bloomington as a monolithic group and start recognizing that they are as diverse as the rest of our community, if not more. And the status of being a student does not disqualify someone from being more or less deserving of affordable housing. And so as a city that claims to value education, it's a bit weird to me that we don't consider being a student the equivalent of being a full-time job. I think that we can and should do better. And while I'm not necessarily jazzed about this specific ordinance, I don't feel that we should be holding our businesses accountable for something that's our fault. And so in the future, we should remedy this issue by changing our policy, not by making our businesses feel the pain of something that we should, we could have and should have done a better job on. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. I'm torn, too. I appreciate the work that HAND has done in Planning and Transportation and the petitioner. I, so, a couple things to add to excellent comments by my colleagues. One is that the Housing Development Fund balance is about four million, I understand. And this would add an additional one. So this is, does this demonstrate urgency to me? I don't think so. I don't think I'm going to, you know, support it just on that basis. It seems we've spent about one point eight million dollars, as I understand it, since 2018. And so I think the fund balance is a healthy fund balance, if I could call it that. And so I'm not sure an additional one million dollars makes a dramatic difference. The timing of this, I see that there is a trend, a positive trend of occupancy. So I don't feel compelled to, it doesn't seem frozen. It doesn't seem like, you know, maybe this is, I don't know, if, you know, better marketing or whatever is needed in order to increase the occupancy. But I'm prepared to wait more time, because frankly- the occupancy. But I'm prepared to wait more time, because frankly, I approved this, too, in 2020. And I did so with an understanding that, with the petitioner, that this was an agreement. And so I feel a sense of capitulation if I surrender to it when I have trends that look like it could work. And I don't know if that means I'm going to be amenable to other petitioners coming forward and saying, "Well, this is not working for me. We need a break here and there, and I've already sort of given my assent." So I'm going to be voting no on this. And, but, you know, I'm certainly curious as to see how this continues playing out. And I agree that a revision, another look and revision of policy is a good one. Absolutely. The onus is on us to do that, obviously. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I feel similarly to Councilmember Zuluk on this matter. I think that the agreement negotiated under the previous mayoral administration left a lot of things unclear, and left no good enforcement mechanisms. And we see it in other developments, as was mentioned by Director Killian Hansen as well. And so we need to consider that it was kind of poorly thought out from the get-go, and that those policies have since been revised, and can be further revised in order to get more affordable housing. And I commit to working on that, along with my colleagues who've also mentioned it. But in a way, I mean, we are, by those standards that we must apply to this older PUD, we are getting two benefits as a city, because we're getting 25 workforce housing units, as long as the current tenants stay in there. Plus, we're getting the 52 times $20,000, so the $1,040,000 for the Housing Development Fund. So in a way, we're getting more than we could have hoped to get in the first place, under our old rules. And I think, you know, towards the question I asked earlier, I think the bottom line is that we cannot legally compel the petitioner to keep lowering the price of the workforce housing units. It's just, we can't legally do that, because that's not what they agreed to. So I do feel a little more optimistic than some of my colleagues, in that I don't think this is a precedent for PUDs going forward. I think that we have different rules now, and we can certainly tighten up the rules that we have now, in order to get what we really need in this community, which is housing that is truly affordable, and not just workforce, which is based on AMIs that are really not realistic for the City of Bloomington. So I will, this is not ideal, but I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Are there other comments?
All right, seeing my colleagues not raising any hands, I'll go ahead and take mine. I've been really conflicted about this since the Plan Commission meeting, when I was the sole vote against it. And I'm going to try to sum this up in an eloquent way. I was going to write it out, and I didn't get to that today. I really feel for the fact that there are empty units. I don't want there to be empty units anywhere. People need housing. We don't want to have things empty. I'm really, really excited about some of the different pilot programs that Hand is doing with that Housing Development Fund. And, you know, $1 million in the Housing Development Fund is something that could really help a lot of people, and I think that that's really powerful. So those are the reasons why I'm leaning on the yes side. But I'm really, really frustrated about developers promising one thing and delivering another. And I'm going to go ahead and read back the original PUD documentation. This was advertised, and this is like my neighborhood, right? This is District 3. This is my neighborhood, when this was being, you know, I was just a regular old citizen, staying in tune with what is going to be built less than a mile from my house, right? And what they said was that it would be multifamily residential use, mix of studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom apartments. Generally, the units are oriented to those seeking a more personal, single-living environment, targeted market, staff and employees associated with the IU Health complex, single professionals and staff and employees associated with the offices and accessory businesses expected to develop adjacent to the IU Health complex. This is how it was sold to the neighborhood. It was not sold as a student complex, okay? This is how it was sold to council, and to the broader community. All right? And I'm going to highlight another building over there, which is the current development, which is unrelated to this, except that it was also sold as a development which would have some units in there that would have broad appeal, not just appeal to single adults. And I have zero problem with students, and students 100% need places to live. But in this town, if you are advertising buildings to single adults, then what you're doing is you're creating student housing. Okay? And the way that the Rallato has been advertising is they are renting by the bedroom, they are renting by furnished bedrooms. And when it first went online a couple of years ago, I looked, and there was a little paragraph, like, there was just a sentence that said, "If you are a family unit that is not just a single person, call us. We have, like, special rates kind of thing." And that is no longer on their website. And I was excited about that, because I was comparing it to the current at the time, who had no such comment on their website. And I was like, "Okay, great." Like, clearly, you know, like, the student market is real in this town, right? Like, 100%. Students need housing, and there are many, many students. But at least there was that sentence that kind of opened up the doors to the concept of people who were not single, unattached adults, to be living in this space, and to be able to, like, be invited in, that this was a space for them. And that's no longer there, and that's kind of disappointing. And so I feel like a yes vote on this is also just a capitulation to developers, that you can come in, and you can sell us whatever you want to sell us, and then they're going to build something different. And that just is really, really frustrating and infuriating. So I don't know what I'm going to do yet. Thanks. That's tough. I do want to comment on Councilmember Zuluk's categorization of it as a policy failure. I don't think it was a policy failure. I think it was done in good faith. But I absolutely 100% agree that some modification to how we run our workforce qualifications to somehow leave space for students somehow to be able to qualify for that, I think is, would be a good move. I think that we should do that. I think that we should at least look at how that kind of thing would be possible. And I think that that is my comment. And do I have to vote first on this, Councilmember Bolden, or Clerk Bolden?
Uh, yes.
I think I might. Thank you. Wonderful. Are there any other comments?
Can we do first round with Councilmember Ruff first? Okay, take your two minutes. That's fine. With Councilmembers Zuluk.
Yeah, so I will just say, like, I understand that everyone had good intentions. But at the end of the day, like, intentions don't impact results. And we have empty housing units when we have a housing crisis, that we could be addressing with $1 million to address all of the different programs that Director Killian Hansen proposed during her response to Councilmember Daly's question. And so for me, it's, I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just saying, like, as a body, we could have done a better job of creating policy that was going to be more effective. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ruff?
Yeah, a lot of good points and arguments have been made up here today, and by staff. And it's complicated, and there's pros and cons that could be, that have been argued on either way to come down on this. But, you know, I can't help but be struck, we give, historically with abatements and other incentive subsidies, we've given other types of businesses with commitments of jobs and other benefits back to the community that are often, we're told, oh, well, if it's substantial compliance, even though it's not complete compliance, based on unforeseeable market conditions, or, you know, as long as there was good faith effort to change circumstances beyond the businesses or this industry's control. So, and we find that acceptable, in those cases, with a lot of times, with these other types of subsidies to businesses we see. But in this residential developer situation, we've been told, good faith effort, staff, Hand staff has said, there's absolutely been good faith effort by the developer to get these units occupied. And I'll take that at face value. And I appreciate the good faith effort that's been made by the developer. And I'm, you know, good points have been made from Councilmember Flaherty on down the line. But I'm going to support this.
Are there any other comments? Well, then, will the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance 2025-01?
Councilmember Stasburg?
Can I pass? Am I allowed to abstain the first?
No. I don't know, actually, but I'm just going to give no.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 5-4. That was a fun one. Thank you all, thank you all so much for being here through all of that. Next, we have one more discussion this evening.
Okay. I move Ordinance 2025-04 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to read Ordinance 2025-04. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Let's do a roll call vote on that. Clerk Bolden, if you could call the roll on the motion to introduce Ordinance 2025-04.
Councilmember Daly?
Yes.
Zuluk?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes. So that passes 7-2. Will the clerk please read?
One second, please. Okay, we'll have to fix it. Ordinance 2025-04, to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding the Establishment of the Transportation Commission. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Administration and Personnel, to remove the Traffic Commission, Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Commission, and Parking Commission, and establish a new nine-member Transportation Commission. The Transportation Commission will make recommendations on relevant transportation and parking sections of the Bloomington Municipal Code, view all transportation-related projects, and propose policies that promote safe, equitable, and sustainable transportation and parking policies and decisions. Additionally, this ordinance amends Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Vehicles and Traffic, to replace references of the Traffic Commission, Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Commission, and Parking Commission, with references to the Transportation Commission.
Thank you. I move Ordinance 2025-04 be adopted. Second?
Thank you. Who is here to report tonight?
Hi, Ryan Robling, Planning Services Manager. I am not going to present anything, as I've presented to this body now three times, and this will be a fourth. So I will quickly mention that this is mostly Ordinance 2024-27, dash 27, with the adopted amendment three, or two, excuse me. The language, it was incorporated, that was adopted last time before we ended. And then we also incorporated Amendment Three, which changed subsection G from two council appointments to one mayor orial and one council member appointment. And yeah, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have several amendments for this. I think that I want to do amendments first, just so that then we can talk about those. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I move Amendment One to Ordinance 2025-04.
Do we have a second for that? Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
So this amendment came about because I was concerned that the city needs a comprehensive parking policy. And the Parking Commission has twice now adopted such policy, but it's been largely ignored by both the previous and the current administrations. And so I've been talking with department heads, whose departments touch on parking, Department of Public Works, Engineering, and also the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development, where the transportation demand management program is housed. And also, I've talked with the deputy mayor. And it seems to me the administration does, is committed to developing a comprehensive parking policy. They've nearly reached an agreement, or maybe it has been reached by now, with a consultant to study our parking pricing and parking infrastructure and policies. And they're intending to follow up on that with the Transportation Commission. And in short, it, even though I had considered an amendment to maintain the Parking Commission, and not have it rolled into this new Transportation Commission, after various conversations, and after the revisions that were already adopted into this ordinance, thanks to Councilmember Flaherty's amendment in December, I feel like the best path to having a comprehensive parking policy with a lot of public input and collaboration between departments, is to have it part of this commission. But I wanted to call out, in particular, the collaborative aspect on parking, that will be necessary for that, for those policies, to not take a backseat to other transportation issues. So I added a where asked clause, and I added to the section about staffing, that it'll be staffed by engineering, as previously said, but that other departments will be called upon to participate. And while I was at it, doing an amendment, I thought I would get rid of a pesky little word that had been bugging me. And that is that in the appointments section of the new commission, under Part F, it said, "Two members shall be appointed by the council and shall be residents living within the city limits who have demonstrated experience using forms of travel other than personal motor vehicles." And I have no idea how they would demonstrate using other forms of travel. So I think, so this amendment just deletes the word demonstrate, and just says they have experience using other forms of transportation. And we can just take them at their word when we interview them for these positions. So that summarizes Amendment One.
Thank you. Are there questions from councilmembers about Amendment One? No questions about Amendment One? Okay, I have a question about Amendment One. And it is for staff. And I'm just wondering if staff has a perspective that they want to share about this amendment?
Yeah, we're fully in support, Ryan Robling, Planning Services Manager. We're fully in support. That makes sense. The demonstrated would have been up to council anyway. So if you guys don't like it, then we don't like it. And then, as for requiring- And then, as for requiring staff to come, we think that makes perfect sense. We want to be collaborative, and we want to ensure collaboration, and I think this is a great way to do that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Moving on to public comment, then, if anybody from the public would like to make a comment specifically about Amendment One to ordinance 2025-04, if you could approach the podium, you'll have, you'll need to introduce yourself and sign in, and then you'll have three minutes. If you wish to make a public comment on Zoom, please raise your hand using the reactions tab, or send a chat message to the host, and look at this, we do have somebody in chambers who would like to make a comment. Go ahead.
Hello, Steve Oland, Chair of the Parking Commission. This comment is for the ordinance as a whole, but it's relevant to this amendment as well. In your packet is an amendment to preserve the Parking Commission, a duly impaneled body dedicated to making recommendations on.
We're specifically just doing comments about Amendment One.
I'm aware of that.
So if you could just stick to Amendment One, that'd be great.
It's hard, because I don't know whether the amendment is going to get a sponsor, the other amendment's going to get a sponsor, and these are relevant. This is, and my time is ticking.
Are there any other comments about Amendment One specifically? Okay, back to council. Does anybody have any comments about Amendment One? Great, then will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment One to ordinance 2025-04?
Councilmember Zulich?
Yes.
Rosenbarger? Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
And, in super slow motion, Councilmember Isak Inti Asari? One more time for the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes 9-0. Are there other amendments that anybody would like to introduce? Okay, do we have any council questions related to the ordinance as a whole, then? Councilmember Ruff?
I would like to get some clarification from staff on the advisory nature of the commission. A specific example is what, the amendment that Councilmember Rallo and I sponsored in, back in December, dealt with. So, the Bike and Ped Safety Commission, this takes what's in Title 15, where it refers to the Bike and Ped Safety Commission, and simply replaces it with this, with eight, with the Transportation Commission. Now, the steps in Title 15 for the transportation, for the TCGP project, TCGP projects, says that if the Bike and Ped Safety Commission votes 75% against a recommendation, or what if you're, it, it has an effect. It actually kills, effectively kills the project, in that form at least. It goes back for revision, or whatever, and can be brought back again. That feels to me like it's more than advisory, right? And so, it feels like the language of the legislation tonight is, when it refers to simply replacing the Bike and Ped Safety Commission, wherever it's referenced in Title 15, with the Transportation Commission, that doesn't seem, to me, it doesn't feel entirely consistent. It's, it's not entirely advisory. It's empowered, in some ways, because it refers to simply doing what the Bike and Ped Safety Commission did before. Now, on top of that, we are to understand that the administration has a revised opinion about council, or anyone that's not directly and entirely a creation of the administration, like the engineer, has any oversight authority, or any sort of power, on decisions not related, not just related to the TCGP, but maybe related to stop signs and speed limits and anything else that we're not sure about, and that the, the administration, city legal's not even absolutely certain exactly how their new interpretation of what's in Title 15, and what the city has always sort of done for the last many decades when it comes to approving these roadway changes, that clarity, at least, has not, it's not clear to me that there's a firm understanding of what needs to be cleaned up and made consistent between this legislation and Title 15, which was the exact oppositional, the reason there was opposition from the administration and from P&amp;T staff, back in December, when Councilmember Rallo and I sponsored our resolution, was that, well, we'd have to change Title 15, that doesn't make any sense to put this in here, when it'll make it inconsistent with Title 15, and, so, I know I threw a lot out there, I realize that, but this is the reason I wanted to also illustrate why I opposed, yes, why I opposed introducing this, because I just, I think it's premature, based on what I've been told. So my question, again, is, what is the, where, I'd like to see, how do you reconcile this idea of oversight and the fact that the Bike and Ped Safety Commission had a sort of an actual power to send something back based on a 75% vote, that's being referred to now in this legislation, as the power of the Transportation Commission? And how is that not more than just advisory? How is that? So, that's my question, but it, and it's, that's a specific example of what my question is, but it really is larger in this inconsistency or lack of clarity between what, what we need to do to actually make Title 15, and I don't know if anything in Title 12 also would apply too, but consistent with what this is, and, and using the TCGP example as something to sort of specifically address, to illustrate what I'm asking.
So, who would like to tackle the advisory nature of this commission?
I'll take a stab at it.
Thank you.
First, for the Traffic Calming Greenway Program, I would say that you slightly mischaracterized it. The current setup for the Bicycle Pedestrian Green, Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Commission, they would be allowed to send it back to staff for revisions. It would not go back to the Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Commission. It would go, be handed off to staff, the city traffic engineer, who then would make decisions. There, it doesn't indicate that it cycles back to, for approval. It's just a one-time revision vote, so I would say that was advisory, and this would keep that going forward. That's for the Greenway program. Traffic calming's a little different, and I would say that, jumping to your second question, that Title 15 needs to be revised. We're looking into that currently, and we would say that this commission is specifically set up to answer that question. It is being tasked as essentially the planning commission for the UDO Title 20, except for transportation questions. So we would want to build it with them moving forward. So we would want their feedback on what is important to a revised Title 15. So this would be essentially keeping everything as it is, and then we configure it out with the new commission moving forward, and, council?
Thank you. Is there any other staff, or anybody online, who is staff, who might want to chime into Nope, okay. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Andrew Seabor, City Engineer. I don't have much else to offer from what Mr. Robling just said. I think there's, in my mind, there really are two questions. The question really before you today is, should there be a different form of a Transportation Commission than exists today? The question about Title 15, and, and what needs to happen there, is related, but it's a different question, and I think we have things that we want to get going, we want to be working with this commission on, and, and look forward to just knowing with certainty what that direction is, so we can make progress on those items.
Great.
If that's okay, I'll make it very brief. Mr. Seabor, I think I probably will direct him to you. Prior to 2019, permanent changes of the roadway required council's consent. Is that correct?
Yeah, things that are in Title 15 did go to city council as practice, whether state code should have, but that was what happened.
Okay, and then it changed to Bike and Ped. Their, their consent was essential.
Bike, Ped, as.
That's how we operated. You went to Bike and Ped, and you needed their consent, correct?
They have gone to Bike and Ped, and they have generally, I think, always supported the recommendations at that time, and, and as Mr. Robling said, they could send it back for further review, but it did not effectively kill.
It required their consent to go forward. Did it not? What have I missed?
The practice was that they have voted in support of the projects that were presented to them.
So, so, just currently, then, what we're saying is, relating to traffic calming projects, what you're saying now, with administration saying, relating to traffic calming projects, this decision is entirely at the discretion of you, now, the city engineer, correct?
The, the traffic calming greenways policy still exists, and would, the practice would be to still take it to this commission for input and engagement.
But, yes, but I'm talking about the decision to do it. It's not their decision, it's your decision. Is that how, this is what Corporation Council, Marjorie Rice is saying?
I think that's the preliminary understanding we're having, there are still ongoing conversations to fully resolve that question, and Corporation Council is online, if there's follow-up.
That's, that's a good point, preliminary, because I think this needs to be postponed. What about stop signs? Stop signs are, so, stop signs are your discretion in terms of the, because this would be something that a Transportation Commission could recommend, or not, right? And it always came to us, but now Corporation Council's saying, stop signs fall in the domain of the administration solely, the engineer.
I guess this feels like a good time to check in, to see if Corporation Council's online to assist.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, hey.
If you can introduce yourself for the record.
Yep, sorry, Marjorie Rice, Corporation Council, I'm going to lower my hand. I, I think that I would recommend that the council approve the legislation tonight, and allow us to work through the changes that we want to work through with you on Title 15. I want to address the question about, and I will say for the record, I was not paying as close attention during the Hamilton administration as I did during the Cruzan administration when I was the Corporation Council, and, and now, as the Corporation Council under the Thompson administration. But I did share in some email correspondence with Councilmember Ruff, that it's been my opinion since any time that I've been sitting in the Corporation Council chair, that the traffic engineer has the responsibility to make certain recommendations under state law regarding stop signs, regarding traffic calming measures. There was a pretty spirited conversation about this topic. In 2012, there's a link out on the Herald Times for anybody that wants to look, where there was, the council wanted some traffic calming measures put in the roadway, the Board of Public Safety did not, and in fact, was not going to put the traffic calming measures in place, and then there was sort of a.
Ms. Rice, if I could just interrupt, I mean, I had a very, my, my questions were really just very simple and direct.
Yeah, but.
So, when you say it's the recommendation of the traffic engineer, you're saying it's the decision of the, of the traffic engineer and the administration, not a commission, not the council.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, and, and that is not my opinion, that's state law.
Okay.
So, state, yeah.
Okay, that's good. I just need clarification. And stop signs, same thing? You're saying it's solely up to you?
But, yeah.
So in the past, we already, always came to council, but you've always had that power, and you, you, you affirm that that is going to be the decision of the administration going forward?
So, I can tell you my recommendation, as a lawyer, I make recommendations as to policy, and it's up to policymakers to decide what to do with my advice, but I will tell you that, I'm going to read, Indiana Code 36-9-7-5, says that it, the traffic engineer shall direct the use of all traffic signs, traffic signals, and paint markings, except on streets traversed by state highways, shall recommend all necessary parking regulations, shall recommend the proper control of traffic movement. And so, and the recommendation, also, the traffic engineer just makes the recommendations, but state law says that the traffic engineer shall only be responsible to the executive and to the Board of Public Safety.
Okay, just so we're in agreement, and I can pass the baton to somebody else to ask a question, you would agree with that it is solely the engineer that is the decision-maker about relating to traffic calming projects, greenway, speed bumps, bump outs, et cetera, stop signs, and I assume parking spaces, adding or subtracting public parking. Is that correct?
Well, yes, because I, I read the language that recommend all necessary parking regulations to be dealing with parking. Now, I do want to make clear that this traffic commission that is being proposed tonight is going to be sort of, as they just said, the comprehensive advisory commission to the traffic engineer. Nobody is thinking that the traffic engineer, you know, alone makes these decisions. That's why we want this commission to be put in place, so there can be this advisory commission to provide the necessary public input. Nobody wants to not receive the council's input. You guys have great relationships with your constituent and get input, and that's what we think this traffic commission is going to be the sort of main commission to provide the input necessary for the engineer to make the decisions that the engineer is statutorily required to make.
Okay, thank, thank you. It just comes as a surprise to me to find that, you know, the stop signs on Seventh Street were always in the, in the responsibility of the administration, not the council.
That's my legal opinion, that they were.
All right, thank you.
And I, I can't, I can't say what happened during the Hamilton administration.
Thank you. I want to follow up on that line for just a second, while we have Corporation Council Rice on Zoom, to ask, in terms of our own structure, and how state law phrases that as the traffic engineer, we have a vacant traffic engineer position. Our traffic engineer is not actually like our department head, so in theory, our traffic engineer reports to our department head, who then reports to the administration. So, is that flow going to also be something that might need to be looked at as we look at how our systems align with state stuff?
Yeah, our local code makes our, and I didn't, let me look for this, our local code, 2.35.010, says that the engineering department shall be administered by a Director of Engineering, who shall be appointed by the mayor, and shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor. The Director of Engineering serves as the city's civil engineer for purposes of this Indiana Code, and serves as the city's traffic engineer for purposes of Indiana Code 36973 that I was just reading from. So our local code makes our engineer the traffic engineer, but if we got a separate traffic engineer, we'll rework this. Again, we, we expect to be reviewing Title 15 and all of these provisions, and make them. and make them align with state law because I believe that the city as a whole is in a safer position when we are following state law.
Great, thank you. Are there other questions from council members about ordinance 2025-04 as amended? Councilmember Ruff, round two.
Just following up on my, my first round, set of questions. So, how is codifying a power? Codifying in our local code a power of this commission, which is that it can kick it back with a vote to the engineer, whether it doesn't have to come back or not. That's, the point is, we're codifying a power. But to me, based on what we've been hearing, that's not permitted under state law. We will be creating here, bestowing a power that is, is it inconsistent as if the council had some power to, to stop or send something back in any of these road areas? So, that's, that's my question. How, how is codifying it? Because we're codifying it even though this says, doesn't say anything about having a, a power. It says anywhere in the Title 15 where it says Bike and Ped Safety Commission is now going to say traffic commission. And under Title 15, Bike and Ped Safety Commission has the power to send something back to the engineer for changes. And state law, at least my understanding of what we've been talking about and what I've talked with, with folks about over the past couple of weeks, is that that's not legal. We can't do that. We can't put that in, in, in our code. If, if the ultimate goal, as City Legal just said, is to get our code, our local code in compliance with state code. So, that's my question right now is, it seems like it's not legal to me to do that. To reference, to reference the Bike and Ped Safety Commission's role because we mistakenly codified it into Title 15 that they actually have a power, an authority, an oversight authority to insist on a change to a plan that's been presented by the engineer or staff.
I can address it from a legal perspective. I would like Andrew to address it or Ryan from their staff perspective. I, I don't think that this commission is taking away any power from the traffic engineer. I don't think, so we're allowed under home rule to put other things in place that are helpful to us if necessary in an advisory commission, for example, to assist the traffic engineer. I don't believe that having this commission is, is doing anything other than assisting the traffic engineer. I don't think it's usurping the traffic engineer from putting a stop sign in place if he wants to. Now, Andrew and Ryan can address practically speaking what they think of this commission's roles and I'd like to hear from them because I think it might actually more, more address your question if they're willing to do that.
Okay, okay. Now, before we go there, I wanted to, before we lose sight of what City Legal just said, what Ms. Rice just said. So, if we passed something, if this council passed something that said 75% of council vote on a, on a TCGP project, it goes back to the engineer for change because we, could we do that? Would that, because that's what the, that's the power that this commission's going to have. Well, why, if, if it's, if it's okay for the commission to have it? And it's not because the commission's not a create creature of the administration. I don't agree with that because we're having to vote now to create it. So, it's not, it's not just part of the administration. You know, you can't say, oh, well, it's really just part of the engineering, this traffic commission. So, if it's, if that's okay to have in Title 15 for the TC, is it okay, would it be okay for council to have the ability?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I, I don't think you can give, because we, because you are creating an, an executive branch commission. And again, state law says the engineer can only be responsible to the executive and to the Board of Public Safety. Your, your hypothetical is that you take some of that executive power and move it over to the legislative branch. Keep in mind, fiscal branch and legislative branch, very important. It's just different than the executive branch. And under state law, it says that the traffic engineer shall only be responsible to the mayor and to the Board of Public Safety, which is the chief administrative commission or board for the city executive side. So, I'm just trying to keep us in those proper areas now.
Okay, we moved the mark a little bit though. I specifically said, the commission, I don't believe that, so you're saying this commission, we're creating a purely 100% executive body when we create this, this transportation committee. It is going to, we're creating this right now and it's part of the, it is, it's purely administration, it's purely administration.
I think it is serving the, isn't it serving and designed to serve the traffic and the, the engineer? Isn't it there to provide some advice to the engineering department?
I would really like to hear from Mr. Seabor and potentially Mr. Robling because they were called into this earlier to kind of explain more, I think, how this commission would advise you and maybe that could give some clarity.
I guess I'll, I'll start, but probably hand it off to, to Mr. Robling as well because I have personally not been involved with the Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Commission meetings. They tend to happen the same night as planned commission meetings. But again, I guess in my mind, the way I'm looking at the ordinance before you today is focusing on what should our commission be that advises on transportation? Right now, we have three. The proposal is one, to have a more unified review of projects, of concepts, of policies, to be more efficient with staff time, with community time. And that's the question. I think the question's about Title 15. The, the answer is that, from my perspective, Title 15 needs to be looked at. There are likely changes that are going to be coming and, and need to happen, but that is in my mind, separate from what the commission structure should be and that I would like that commission to be able to review and provide input on what those Title 15 changes are. So, in my mind, they're very related, but they're two separate questions. And that's, yeah, I hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Seabor.
Mr. Robling, do you have?
I don't know that I could add much to that other than, yeah, the, so sorry. Other than that, this commission, its essential sole purpose is to help staff, specifically the traffic engineer, make the best decision possible specifically with safety in mind, so.
Do we have other questions from council members? Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. A small one to follow up on something that Corporation Counsel Rice just said, which is that, I think, I think I heard that in her opinion, an advisory commission like this is solely part of the executive branch, that it, that it's, and I'm just curious where that interpretation's coming from. If there's state code that you're referencing, obviously, it's an advisory body of local code creation that advises, I would say, actually, the council very much. You know, there's plenty of things in the, the ordinance that has it advising on policy matters that require code change, that involve comprehensive plan, transportation plan, et cetera. So, no question, it's advising the, the council and legislative body and fiscal body just as much as the executive. But I'm curious, is there, yeah, what's the basis for the interpretation that an advisory commission is solely a body of the executive branch?
No, I'm just saying in this case, to the extent that they are advising the engineer, that's on the executive side. If they're making, you know, policy calls for the, either for the mayor or for the council, fiscal recommendations, but again, we have to remember that Indiana is a strong mayoral executive state, so budgetary decisions are brought to the council from the executive. So, you know, the council can't raise the budget that the mayor has presented. So, I think even those kinds of conversations, it's, it's fairly interconnected in the way that Indiana law has set up checks and balances for the mayor and the council. You know, and even in terms of legislation, you know, the council passes, the mayor gets to approve it or veto it and then, you know, so, so there's an interconnectedness. I don't know that I'm, that my opinion that is 100% executive, but I do think that in the case, in this case, we are creating, as Ryan and Andrew just said, we're creating a commission that is going to advise them in their role as, as, you know, the, the traffic engineer, which is definitely an executive function under state law. And I, I just think that we are safer as, you know, I rep, my client is the city of Bloomington. My client is not the mayor. I represent the city of Bloomington. And so, my, my advice is that we follow state law as closely as we possibly can and that's leaving the traffic engineering decisions to the traffic engineer and creating this advisory committee to help in that regard. That's, that's, that's my best advice I can give.
Okay.
And I, and I think that, you know, may, maybe this commission will be providing some information that is helpful to the council from a legislative and fiscal standpoint. And if so, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Councilmember Rallo, one more question and then we'll go to public comment.
Sure. Ms. Rice, I have a question. I'm, I'm, because I'm quite gobsmacked by this, the developments over the last couple of weeks. You served as Corporation Counsel during the Cruzan administration. And was your interpretation of state code different then? Or has something changed? Has the code changed in order to, you know, essentially make this, permanent changes in the roadway solely an administrative function? Your mic's off.
Yeah.
Can't hear you.
You're muted, Corporation Counsel.
Okay. So, it's, yes, in, in this conversation, this very similar conversation came up before related to traffic calming on West Third Street. And there was actually, it's, anybody wants to Google, it's out there on the internet. You can find a 2012 article where the council passed traffic calming measures to be put on West Third Street. The Board of Public Works said, no, sorry, we're not putting those in the road. And it was my opinion at the time that the council could say we wanted it in the road, but the Board of Public Safety and the engineer had the ultimate say about what goes in the road or not. And there was a great article out there about this where Mayor Cruzan weighed in and said, hey, this, you know, we're not going to get into this issue. And ultimately, the Board of Public Safety agreed to go ahead and put the West Third Street traffic calming. So, I believe that my legal opinion tonight is consistent with my legal opinion from 2012.
Okay, so, but, I mean, that was one example, but there were multitude of examples where the, it came to the council for our decision and that was binding. So, how does that?
And, and I, I, just because something happens doesn't mean that it's necessarily legally consistent. And as I've said in my email to Councilmember Ruff, I don't know exactly how all of these, all of these practices have evolved over the years and what took place during the Hamilton administration. I can say that as a lawyer, I provide advice and policymakers do what they want to do. It has always been my advice that the traffic engineer, because they have professional and ethical standards and they are engineers, they are the best ones and that's why state law makes, gives them the authority to decide what goes in the road.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Let's go ahead and go to public comment now. This would be public comment on this ordinance 2025-04 as amended. If you're interested in making comment here in chambers, you can go ahead and approach the podium, sign in, state your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes. If you are on Zoom and would like to make a comment, please use the reactions tab to raise your hand or you can send a chat message to the host. We'll go ahead and start here and, actually, hang on a second. Do we need to give staff a second for the timer? There we go. Wonderful. Go ahead. Thank you.
Steve Volin, Parking Commission. None of the commissions that are the components of this merger proposal were even given the courtesy of an invitation to present or answer questions here tonight or in prior hearings. Nevertheless, in your packet is an amendment to preserve the Parking Commission, a duly impaneled body dedicated to making recommendations on parking, especially its pricing. It still needs a sponsor, but it was approved by the commission six to one. Parking pricing needs to change. It needs to get more complicated. A flat $1 an hour is no longer serving the public interest. Some streets need to be increased in price, some decreased. Prices need to adjust with market conditions more than once a year and certainly more than the zero times it has changed since meters were installed a decade ago. A citizen panel should be making those recommendations. But we've been struggling for years to process the data necessary to make those decisions without funds or more than the most basic of support from a previous mayor's office that willfully neglected the commission. ITS just last month offered the commission assistance it's needed all along. They want to consolidate databases that live in silos in various departments. That includes parking meter data. They told me how they could put it all online and even create heat maps that would graphically demonstrate the issues. But while ITS's initiative is a positive reflection of this administration, the previous administration's proposal to consolidate these commissions was continued last April. The Parking Commission has been living on the chopping block for years since before the NOVAC report. The commission has done good work in this last year, for example, in how to change city policy toward the use of private service parking lots. But because their stated preference from the get-go has been to eliminate the commission, it's no wonder that the Parking Services Director issued an RFP for a parking study last fall without even mentioning it to the commission, let alone consulting it. This commission was approved by Council 7-1 in 2016. It was famously the subject of the previous mayor's first veto. That veto was overridden 9-0. The previous administration then failed to fill seats or collaborate meaningfully with the commission for the next seven years. This is the commission's form of demolition by neglect. Now, the commission is subject to the merger that the previous administration said they wanted before they hired the NOVAC group to study it. Like the council, boards and commissions do not exist only for oversight and they don't exist only for collaboration. They, like you, must do both. But the Parking Commission would love to continue doing its work with the long overdue collaboration it needs, like ITS is now offering. It should be able to have the help of the TDM manager as well as the Parking Services Director. It can act as a subsidiary body to the Transportation Commission, which does not have parking pricing as its primary focus. We're already in place. Our policy recommendation to you is, instead of disbanding us, give us official permission to actively advise the new TC. Please at least allow a discussion by moving the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments in chambers? And actually, before that happens, is there anybody who's raised their hand on Zoom? We'll go ahead and go in chambers. Okay. Great, thank you. Go ahead, ahead, go ahead in chambers.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher Engie from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce with a new name tag and a new title that I don't recall. I want to echo some of Mr. Volin's points that he made tonight and as a member of the, of the Parking Commission for four years. It is, it was an excellent commission and did some really good work. Ms. Wall was, was tremendous with her involvement in Parking Services, but he mentions that the cloud, it was over. But I think this is ultimately, the consolidation is where the city needs to go. And I think it's a broader point of there's too many boards, there's too many commissions. I think we heard from Clerk Bolden about the appointments and the slowness of that. We just need to rethink these and I think Ms. Crossley in the clerk's office is going to move toward that direction where they are useful, that they are not just in name giving the, the intention of citizen input, but that we're getting real input that we're using. And I don't know if we're quite doing that now. And I think if, once this goes through the Transportation Commission, we can go back and look at possibly adding a Parking Commission once we've eliminated more other boards and commissions that can do some of the great work that I think it's capable of doing, which is, for one, is hearing, hearing from residents. I thought that was the most interesting thing that I think we did and they had some really good ideas. And a couple of times, that was just entertaining the four-letter words that they were able to use as many in a short period of time. So, I think there's possibilities here. This isn't the end of the discussion on the Transportation Commission. We've heard Title 15, which is boggling my mind just thinking about all the legalese and that. So, we have work to do, but consolidation... So we have work to do, but consolidation that the commission or the council on processes, if I can remember that, is working toward as well. So I think this is a step in the right direction that just needs to be looked at periodically on where that Transportation Commission, how are they doing? Are they addressing parking issues, as Councilmember Piedmont Smith mentioned, who had the original amendment? So I would recommend passing this tonight. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Has anybody popped up on Zoom?
There is someone who sent a chat to me, if you'd like me to read it.
That would be fantastic, thank you.
One moment. This is a comment from Sam Dove, who says, "Council needs to add stop sign back into Washington and 7th due to an accident. There are many accidents on that intersection. I suggest you add that stop sign back for pedestrians." That is the comment.
That may have been more a period of general comment, comment, but that's okay. Is there anybody else in chambers? Oh. Wonderful. I don't see anybody else in chambers right now, so let's go to that raised hand on Zoom. Please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Council. My name's Eric Osteen. Thank you for allowing me to offer comment this evening. I would ask that you postpone indefinitely ordinance 2025-04. I could go into a more elaborate discussion of this matter, but I think I will wait on that. But one thing I wanted to note was, Indiana Code 36-9-7-4 reads, "Authority and Responsibility of Traffic Engineer." The traffic engineer is responsible only to the city executive or safety board, and the traffic engineer may act only in an advisory capacity to the executive or board. So despite the, it goes on to say, I'll just read it and complete, "The traffic engineer has full authority over all the traffic engineer's subordinates." So despite the analysis offered earlier in the discussion, which I very much appreciate, I think this should be discussed because it's a very serious matter. I think it strikes at the balance of the legislative body and the executive body in Indiana, and I think it, I think there's constitutional elements of this that should be examined, but it appears that Indiana Code, if that's what we're relying on, says that the traffic engineer may act only in an advisory capacity to the executive or board. So I'm just really confused, and I think many of you are, and I think many members of the public are, and given the pre-established legislative history in Bloomington, and as well as in hundreds of other municipalities that I've looked at recently, I think this warrants a pause and a careful, very careful discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commenters here in chambers? Any other hands raised on Zoom? All right. Reverting back to council before we have comments, are there any questions that have come up? I have one. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I would just ask our own legal counsel whether either the council attorney or deputy attorney have an opinion on whether it would be unwise to approve this ordinance based on the newly rediscovered portions of state code regarding the traffic engineer.
You know, I was in the press as attorney to council during many of the activities or actions that have been referred here tonight, so I don't have the historical knowledge that U.S. council members have. And I can't speak to Title 15 in detail. I'm prepared really to talk about Title II tonight. Having said that, I see the Title II amendments as a legal matter, as being unrelated to Title 15 in that respect. So I think that the legislation, the Title II legislation could be discussed tonight and voted on. I don't see the relationship with Title 15 at this point, but I also understand that I don't have the historical knowledge that you do with respect to many of these issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and ask mine. There was a reference, I think this is for staff, I don't know if it would be for Mr. Roblein or Mr. Seabor, and I can't remember who referenced parking studies, that there were parking studies that were being done. And I guess I'm thinking about Mr. Volin's comments, and he makes really important points in terms of parking pricing and wanting to make sure that there is some priority on that parking pricing. So can one of you speak to, I guess, more about the status of those studies? And then, you know, how, I guess, how are you just going to like balance this commission with all of these concerns of bike pad, traffic, and parking, and make sure that everything kind of gets its due diligence?
Yeah, so there are actually three studies right now that will go to this commission. One of them is a parking study. I'll quote Adam Wason, "Full study in Transportation Commission and stakeholder input should be complete by Christmas 2025." So we're fully expecting that that study be brought forward to the new Transportation Commission, and they will work as a stakeholder, if not a steering committee. And that'll be true for two other current, currently planned studies. And then for balancing, I think that's a reasonable question. I think we'll have to see how it goes, but for staff's perspective alone, it'll free up a bunch of time that we are dedicating to just staffing meetings. So we will have more time and ability to respond and to address those items. And then I also believe that we designed the new commission in a way that it doesn't have a strict schedule. It will allow them to help assemble their own schedule, meaning they can plan meetings when they seem fit, essentially. So there might be more than one meeting in a month, or there might be no meetings in a particular month, depending on the workload. So we're fully prepared for it to be kind of heavy at some points and kind of a lull at other points, which is essentially how the current commissions work, where we'll have a few months where nothing comes forward.
Okay, thank you. And then kind of following up on that, if somebody was to introduce Amendment Three, maintaining the Parking Commission status, how much of a kind of workload burden would that add to staff?
Yeah, well, that's basically an unanswered question right now, because it would move some of it to the Transportation Demand Manager position, who currently staffs no positions, or no commissions. So that would be a complete shift in that one position, and then how other departments respond would have to be addressed as well. So I couldn't say.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, sorry, did I see your hand up in there?
Thank you. This may be as a question for council, I'm sorry.
Corporation Counsel?
Corporation Counsel, Marjorie Rice. The questions are on mechanisms. So the conversation that you and Councilmember Rallo and Ruff were having around bringing things to council, if there was the desire to bring council into the loop, I'm not saying that there is, I'm just saying if there was, what is the mechanism or what are available mechanisms to make that happen outside of the conversation that we're having specifically around the ATC?
Yeah, so, oh, here, so I'm going to just first mention home rules. So Indiana is a home rule state that says local governments have the authority to pass legislation that they think is going to be helpful, and they have whatever powers they need to do things that are useful in their community. So to the extent that we are not conflicting with state law, you know, we can pass local laws that make sense for us. So I'm all for, with, you know, if the council wants to get involved in codifying things that make sense for them, you know, to provide whatever, and again, laws are approved by the mayor, whatever makes sense on the local level, as long as we are not conflicting with the duties of the traffic engineer. And those are, and, you know, I'm happy, Lisa, I think, can send them out. I'm happy to send them out to you so you can kind of see what they are, but they're pretty straightforward. Ultimately, you know, these sorts of where stop sign goes, that kind of thing, goes through the traffic engineer, and then the Board of Public Works puts it in place in the roadway. And I think that this commission that you're talking about tonight is to provide that sort of advisory nature to the engineer. So maybe there can be some other creative ideas about what to put in place locally that makes sense. Again, I sure don't want to come across as saying that, you know, the executive doesn't need the input of the council, or we don't want the input of the public, because that is not at all the case. I just want to make sure we are, you know, following the letter of the law. So I'm happy, I think we're going, you know, we'll continue to have conversations. We will have to continue to have conversations about what in Title 15 needs addressed. I think that's separate from the conversation we're having tonight. But I do think the point that Ryan just made, to the extent that we can free up staff to not be serving multiple different commissions, they probably will have more time to work on some of these parking things and, you know, policy calls that the council's interested in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. There likely are still things that will need Title 15 policy changes that we want this commission to weigh in on. What exactly they are, I can't say, but there are things, like thinking about parking. The engineer likely should determine where parking should exist, but maybe what the pricing of that parking is, maybe that is still something that needs city, we need to do a deeper dive on personally, or how close to a curb a parallel parked car still needs to be. Like, there are still policy things that I would expect to see in Title 15, but some of the elements likely would not be. So just to say that there are still elements that I would expect to be coming to city council, but what are they will likely change.
Could I ask a quick follow-up question?
Okay.
Very relevant, very quick. Same question, I mean, if we're, and I think you already answered it, but just in terms of the mechanisms that may be available to us, if we're interested or compelled by the argument that, hey, you know, we actually do need a parking strategy, like what mechanisms are available to us to influence the creation of such a thing outside of having a commission? So what's the antithesis of saying, let's create this commission?
I'm not good with big words. Could you repeat the question?
So the, Mr. Volin made the comment that there is an amendment that needs a sponsor that would allow us to retain the Parking Commission, but with a reduced function, that function directly related to parking strategy, rather than just general parking studies, et cetera. But, and similar to my first question, like what other mechanisms might exist? If that's a thing that we wanted to achieve as a council, how else might we achieve that or outside of the option that's on the table? That's not really on the table, but potentially on the table.
Yeah, I think one item, as it relates to a couple of the conversations that are happening, that I'm personally excited about having a single commission and engineering being involved, is, engineering's not been heavily involved in the Parking Commission as it exists, but per the state code we're stating, my position is legally required to advise on the regulations of parking. So it just, there's a lot of efficiencies that will come from engineering being present and already there, so to be assured that we are a part of that process. Where currently, that's maybe not, hasn't been happening. So I think that's going to be an improvement there. And then just how, if, to provide reports, I guess another thing just I would generally state is, anytime a council member or anybody can submit comments, we're going to respond and engage. And so that's what freeing up the staff capacity will also hopefully enable us to be more responsive to those kinds of things.
Thank you. Anybody else? Dave? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Rallo.
So just for clarity, Mr. Seabor, maybe Ms. Rice, if she's there. So in the past, you've come to us and you said, "We want to put stop signs in at these intersections," and we've approved them. And in the past, that goes into our code. There was a stop sign at that intersection, now it's in our code. But now we're saying, you have the total power, or the administration does, to put that stop sign in. Is that correct? Am I missing anything so far? It's not up to the council, but you've got to come to the council to have it put into our code, don't you, do you not?
I don't think there is a legal requirement that it's in our code. I think that state law says that the traffic engineer shall direct the use of all traffic signs, traffic signals, and paint markings. I don't, and again, happy to, and Andrew may know more about what happens in other jurisdictions, but I believe the state code and Andrew, in looking at the manual on uniform traffic control devices, has the expertise and the knowledge to know where stop signs go and the authority under state law to go to the Board of Public Works and say, hey, who has control over the rights of way, to say, I need a stop sign there. You know, years ago, there was a stop sign.
So we don't find stop signs at a specific location in the code?
We do, locally, that's a, that is a local.
Then how does that go, get into the code if we can't amend? Isn't it up to council to amend the code?
Yes, it is up to the council, but I'm saying I don't know that this where stop signs go have to be in our local code. They are in our local code, that is a local practice.
So from here on, they won't be, is what you're saying potentially?
I'm saying that my reading of Indiana law is that we do not have to come to the council to say, please approve this stop sign in this location. I believe the traffic engineer has the authority under Indiana law to place, to direct the use of all traffic signs, traffic signals, and the traffic engineer reports only to the mayor, and in our case, to the Board of Public Works. And so the Board of Public Works can say, yes, you know, go ahead and in this right-of-way that we have this jurisdiction over, put that sign there.
Okay, and it could potentially never appear in the code.
Councilmember Rallo, I think that this is not relevant at this point, because that's a discussion of Title 15, and right now we're talking about Title II.
Well, it's the duties of this new commission, and I'm thinking that this commission is apparently a commission of the administration, we've been told, and the administration has always had these powers over permanent changes in the roadway. And that is fairly shocking to me, because it has been in the past, unless we're living in an alternative universe, and everything just, you know? We've had the discretion, as late as a few months ago.
Yes.
The administration came to us for changes relative to stop signs.
I agree. I think that it's.
So what has changed?
It's going to be a really interesting discussion when we have to do the Title 15.
But this is why we need to postpone this commission, because the commission is part of this, apparently, this, I need another interpretation of the law, I think. I mean, with all due respect, Ms. Rice, I mean, you serve the administration here, and I think that our council attorney probably needs more time in order to evaluate this, and I don't think that we, I'm not willing to accept that.
I think that, I do, I'm just going to give you my opinion. I think Title II and Title 15 are separate. I don't think that you have to delay the vote tonight. I'm happy to have Ms. Lehner give her opinion if she disagrees with me, but I don't think that there needs to be a delay tonight. I think you can vote on this. It's not inconsistent with the other changes that we'll be talking to you guys about and hopefully bringing forward in Title 15. But that's just my legal opinion.
Thank you. Do other council members have anything? We are still on questions, so seeing no more questions, I think moving to comments would be in order at this point. So as a reminder, we have five minutes to comment, and I'm going to give staff just a second to get the timer on the screen, because that is such an. a second to get the timer on the screen because that is such an ongoing struggle technologically for us these days. And while we're doing that, we can all craft our comments. And decide who wants to go first. Does anybody want to go first? All right. Councilmember Ruff is going to go first when we've, wonderful, go ahead, Councilmember Ruff.
I, I just, at this point, I have to, I'm not, I'm a little skeptical of this claim that there's, they're totally separate, Title 15 and this are just not related in an important way, when this legislation specifically refers to the powers that this commission will have related to procedures, processes in Title 15. And, and I'm not sure that that, what's in Title 15 now regarding, for example, the TCGP, isn't actually in conflict with state law. I'm not confident of that because it, it does give this, um, commission, which I don't believe also is exclusively an executive, part of the executive branch, a power. So, I just, I just need a little more, now, maybe I can be totally convinced that this is not an issue at all. I just, I just don't have clarity right now. I just don't have enough clarity right now. Now, I appreciate, um, and value the idea behind this DA, the TC, the Transportation Commission, and I believe 100% that the commission's going to do important and valuable work to improve, um, and have important input to improve transportation in the city. I believe that 100%. And I think our transportation policies and investments and priorities will improve and be more inclusive and be more representative of the community because of this commission. I, I believe that. So that's not what I'm concerned about or skeptical of. I'm just seeing a lot of the objections that existed in December about the amendment I sponsored, playing out here with a different response from, uh, the administration and staff, specifically now that we have this interpretation that it really isn't the realm of, of, of council in any way, shape, or form. So, you know, I'm, if we had more time, I wouldn't, I'm not, I might thoroughly and enthusiastically embrace this, uh, legislation, but I, I'm not there yet and I don't really see the hurry because right now, the experts in transportation engineering have all the power they need to do, apparently, to make any of these decisions that need to be made in the next couple of months. And I think it's worth it to try and get the consistency between, um, all parts of the code, make sure it's in compliance with state code, and, um, before we move on and, and do something that's going to, that I see is connected, that I see is related. So, again, I want to emphasize, I think this commission will be, provide important input and value to the community in terms of our transportation infrastructure and our transportation priorities and policies. I believe that. And, uh, but I'm just, I don't think we're ready to go there yet responsibly. And I don't get the hurry, so I'm, I'm gonna have to vote no because I don't really have any other option. I don't, I don't believe in just passing, especially when I've explained my position, there's no need to pass. So I'd probably have to vote no.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, um, I, I think that the new Transportation Commission will, is, is a good way to combine like, um, things that now currently often require presentation to more than one commission, to develop a comprehensive transportation policy with all the staff that are relevant in the room when certain decisions are made. And, uh, I guess I, I do have to admit, you know, part of it is that this commission has the buy-in and support of the administration, whereas with the Parking Commission, I'm skeptical, even with this administration. Um, so, so I'm, I'm going to support this Transportation Commission. I think it is important that we vote on it tonight because we need to fill the positions on the Transportation Commission. There are five positions to be filled, um, by the council, uh, and, you know, as we know, it takes, it takes us a while to do interviews, to get the word out, to get people to apply, and we'll have some tough choices to make because there are three existing commissions and some of those folks will want to serve on this one. Um, so there is a, a time element here that we need to be aware of. So as to what Councilmember Ruff said and what Councilmember Rallo has said previously, um, I, I, if there is a discrepancy between, um, the practice of sending Title 15 changes to the council and of the way that the, um, uh, Traffic Calming Greenways program is administered and what is in state law, those discrepancies are there now. So if we pass this, it's not adding any discrepancy, it's already there. So we will look at that, and, and I am just as surprised as my colleagues that, that this is the case because I've been on this council as long, almost as long as, as they have, and, and we've always gone through council for these things. But I do not think that that is any reason to delay action on this item. This item is really largely Title 2. And the only mention of Title 15 is, is not an additional, uh, possible violation of state code. It's the same violation of state code whether we do this or not. Potential violation, and we, we will investigate that, and I think the administration is committed to investigating it, and of course, I've heard through comments up here that we are as well, so we can do that separately. So I, I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
Uh, yes, um, I appreciate the work that's been done and I appreciate, of course, I appreciate our engineering and planning staff. I think they do an excellent job, and many cases, I think that there has been dysfunction in terms of implementation of things like some permanent changes in the roadway that I, I don't want to speak agnostium, but everyone here is aware that I think were necessary and, and a waste of money and money spent, could have been better spent elsewhere. But, um, the problem, the dilemma I have right now is I don't want to empower a commission, possibly empower a commission, although I'm told it doesn't really have any power. This is, this is not a commission that we need to appoint because, um, you know, they're needed necessarily, because the administration can already, at their discretion, do what they want. Put the, put this, put the stop signs in on Seventh Street. It's like, you know, Glenda the Good Witch, you've always had that power, apparently. So, I don't want to empower a commission where its apparent duties are ambiguous. Ambiguous why? Because as late as a couple of months ago, we, the council, had an ordinance to install and remove some stop signs. Apparently, that was totally unneeded, didn't need to do that whatsoever. Uh, it's now being asserted that the administration has the sole authority to do this. For greenways, speed bumps, bump outs, stop signs, bike lanes, public parking spaces, that is, that has not been my experience in the last 22 years. It has come to council, and it's come to council in part because the specifics of the location of those features appeared in code, and now we're being told it's not going to appear, necessarily appear in code, or it's going to be cosmetic. Maybe it comes to council and we say, "We didn't like those stop signs there." Well, it doesn't appear in code. Those don't. Maybe, the ones that we accede to, they go, they go in code. What? I think that this is, it, it, to me, I need more time to get a, another opinion of the interpretation of this code, because when Corporation Council Rice was the Corporation Council under the Cruzan, uh, administration, she maintained, what I'm maintaining today is that you had to come to council for that. There was one exception that apparently she, she differed on, and that was the bump, uh, the speed bumps on West Third Street. I remember that. So I'm worried about a balance of power here, I'm worried about our legislative authority, establishing a new commission, not sure of its duties or responsibilities, it's very ambiguous to me. This is all new to me in terms of what comes before us and what doesn't, and I think that that deserves more time. So I'll be voting now, I don't expect that the council will support a, unless someone tells me, other than Councilmember Ruff, that we should go ahead with, with, to postpone, I'll be voting no tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Who? Councilmember Flaherty.
I think this is fairly brief. I guess, first of all, I just wanted to address the Parking Commission issues, in particular as our ex-affiliate member of the Parking Commission. We did have some good discussions over several meetings in the past year, as well as Chair Rollin and myself had some good conversations about, uh, where parking policy should live in the city, and, um, it was a close question for me. I, I considered very seriously the possibility of supporting an effort to retain the Parking Commission. He mentioned a vote at the meeting in December, I was the no vote in that, uh, vote to, to recommend keeping the Parking Commission separate. I think for me, um, integrating it into the Transportation Commission makes sense for some key reasons related to parking pricing as a means to help achieve transportation demand, or sorry, transportation mode shifts and transportation demand management, but it's not the only tool. There are other tools, uh, like on the supply side and inducing demand by improving the quality and prevalence of infrastructure. So like, these things all act in tandem and, and in concert, and I think it's better integrated. Additionally, parking issues, especially in limited public rights of way, have a lot to do with land use, and that too is, is often interacting with, uh, other potential uses of that land for sidewalks, for multi-use paths, et cetera. Uh, and so I think that integration ultimately is, is better. The other challenge, and through no fault of the Parking Commission, they were not well-resourced or well-supported through much of their history and weren't always able to produce the types of things that we'd like to see to inform parking policy. I think Section G, which came by amendment that I introduced in December, uh, says, as part of the powers and duties, that the commission will produce or oversee an annual analysis of parking asset management, looking at pricing and making recommendations, uh, data analytics, uh, analysis, utilization rates, et cetera, for all parking assets in the city. So hopefully, this can get us on, on track with where we want to be from that analysis standpoint, and I appreciate the additional changes brought by my Councilmember Piedmont Smith, colleague as well, uh, with, with the amendment to further emphasize that, that we want this to be a, a, uh, an important part of the commission's focus. Finally, just with respect to the Title 15 and Title 2 things, it seems, I'm happy, I think it can be reconsidered separately from this commission decision, I guess, just like Councilmember Piedmont Smith said, and I think we should continue to look at that. I think I've been broadly of the opinion historically that what Corporation Council Rice said about it not, things like stop signs not having to appear, not being required to appear in Title 15, that has been my understanding, um, and that we've just done it out of practice. What's, and, and so there's no, no harm there because we're not, you know, taking away authority. What would be interesting is whether or not the council can direct a, a stop sign over the sort of protestation of the engineer, and it sounds like maybe that's where we have some ambiguity and, uh, you know, an opinion from the Corporation Council that, that that wouldn't be okay, and I'm not sure we've ever been rigorous or kind of in our understanding of that. Uh, so I look forward to additional conversations there. Again, I don't think it majorly affects this commission, uh, and I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to make a comment down here on my left? Okay, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a, a comment then. So it's been a really interesting conversation in terms of the Title 2 versus Title 15, but I also don't see a conflict in terms of what this is doing is mostly changing Title 2. But I also just kind of went through and highlighted all of the actual purposes and actions that are kind of cited in the, the creation of the Transportation Commission, and I thought that it would, might be worth it to just kind of read those out loud, um, so that people realize exactly what power this commission will or will not have in terms of those Title 15 versus Title 2, um, issues that were brought up. So, in the purpose statement, it says, "The commission shall provide recommendations and guidance." It says that it shall serve as a standing steering committee. Neither of those things empower it in some way to make final decisions. Under powers and duties, it will coordinate, supervise, and when necessary, approve transportation-related studies, plans, consultant, consultant reports, activities, programs, and projects, including acting as a standing steering committee. Those words, "when necessary, approve" is pretty key because there might be times that it is not necessary for this commission to approve something in order for it to happen. Review all transportation projects. Provide a forum for members of the public, which I think is really key and important. Conduct education activities. Make recommendations on transportation policy. Again, recommendations are, like, making recommendations is not empowering final decisions. Make recommendations on public parking policy. Produce or oversee an annual analysis of parking asset management. Request appropriations through the mayor and communicate the need for appropriations to the city council. None of those things really empower decision-making in the way that there was, uh, there were statements made in terms of state law and the traffic engineer's responsibilities and duties. And honestly, reading through the Bike-PED Safety Commission, which is going to be deleted as part of this, it also does not actually state that one of the duties is to approve greenways. Doesn't actually say that that is the responsibility of that, of that board, or of that commission. And then the Title 15 changes are just replacing references to Traffic Commission, Bike-PED Safety Commission, with references to Transportation Commission. And specifically with regard to greenways, I went ahead and looked, looked at the Traffic Calming and Greenways Program, part of our code, to just see, well, what is it that it says right now about Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission? And it actually says, "The Traffic Calming and Greenways Program administered by the Planning and Transportation Department and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission shall be incorporated by reference into this chapter." And that is the reference. It says that that program is administered by both of those bodies. And so I also don't actually see any conflict with that either. So I think that, that in code, there's not necessarily that conflict in terms of what is in this ordinance and this creation of a commission, um, though there may be other conflicts within Title 15 and then just our general practice of having certain things in Title 15. So that will also be some interesting clarity and understanding, uh, moving forward in terms of the relationship between the administration and the council and how we, um, honestly, to me, the most important part is being transparent with our public. Like, we don't want our, our traffic engineer who is, like, only responsible to our mayor, like, doing whatever on earth they want to do any old time. We want there to be transparency, we want there to be public input, we want there to be a process and a procedure that doesn't just involve, like, one person going off and doing whatever they want, no matter what state law says about who has ultimate authority. But that is down to process and administrative procedure, and that is something that's been done a certain way for an awful lot of years, that now maybe we can go, maybe that was not actually the best way to do it, and there should be something slightly different. So I'm happy to support this tonight and looking forward to reconsidering how we manage other pieces of our transportation policies. And unless somebody down here would like to make a comment, or somebody down here would like to make a two-minute rebuttal, which it looks like we have, um, so Councilmember Ruff, two minutes.
It's one lot, take two minutes, uh, but thank you for recognizing me. Uh, so I'm reading now from the, um, the process for Traffic Calming, staff-led Traffic Calming Neighborhood Greenway Process, which is incorporated as part of Title 15. Step six reads, "City staff shall present the project, objectives, baseline data, notes from public meetings, and design concepts to the Bicycle-Pedestrian Safety Commission for review. By default, projects will proceed unless a 75% of the B, PSC, the Bicycle-Pedestrian Safety Commission, appointed members vote to send the project back to the city staff for further refinement." Councilmember, uh, Council President Stossberg and I might apparently disagree on to what extent that is some kind of- extent that is some kind of an actual power. But I, that's the key spot where I find a conflict with what supposedly cannot be done by anyone but the engineer. "By default, projects will proceed unless a 75% of the BPSC-appointed members vote to send the project back to the city staff." Right? That's more than just a, to me, that's more than just a recommendation. That's more than just advisory. That's all I want to point out. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take my two-minute rebuttal because I was, my name was invoked. The section that I was reading was 1526-030, oh no, 1526 Traffic Calming and Greenways Program. And I'm not sure where the reference was that, that you just read. But that was what I was able to find super quickly during the meeting while we were talking in terms of that reference. So if I missed another reference, then I missed a reference. And I would agree that that gives it some amount of power and authority. But it also doesn't preclude the engineer coming back with something revised. And it really, I mean, I've, I've sat through a couple of those meetings. And eventually, there is usually agreement between staff and that commission. And I'll once again say, a key part of that process is the public comment. And is that, that public input into the whole process that I think is really important and is maintained in the, in the transportation, or yeah, in the Transportation Commission. Are there other comments or two-minute rebuttals out there? Great. Then I think that we're ready to call the roll on, I'm going to have to go back to what our ordinance number is. Ordinance 2025-04 as amended.
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Ruff?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you. So that passes with a vote of seven to two. And now we, we've, we're almost at the end of our agenda. We have reached our second period of, of public comment for items not on the agenda. If you are out there and would like to make a comment on something not on the agenda, thank you, by the way, to all of the staff who are now wandering out of the room. I appreciate your, your time and your attention this evening. So our second period of public comment, you will have three minutes. Please state your name for the record and we'll start here in chambers.
Good evening. Christopher Andrew from the Brighter Blue Chamber of Commerce. A couple of the items earlier, a couple hours ago, that, that sort of dealt with housing incentives, that I think call for a work session or deliberation meeting on what those are and what those should be. I think bringing in partners from hand, bringing in some of the developers and kind of getting a real grasp of it. And then we heard from Mr. Vensel at the Summit PUD on affordable housing, and that that subsidy is then spread over units and sort of still understanding that. The difference between affordable and workforce, and just kind of getting a real sense of what, where we, and as a community, want to go. The second thing is sort of what's the legislative role is another one that I think deserves its own sort of deliberation or work session within what the council should or should not be doing. It seems sometimes we're getting into the weeds. I was going to use the term overreach tonight, but I thought that was tone deaf, so I'm not going to use it. Because we've seen where I think it's been really beneficial, I think it was last year with Public Works example, questioning and moving some funds around in a personnel matter that I think took two meetings. But it was very good example of excellent legislative oversight. So sort of looking on what this body's role is, which I think has been called into question, I don't know how many times tonight. So just a couple things here as we wrap things up. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have anybody online who wishes to make a comment? If you're online and want to make a comment, you can use the reactions tab to raise your hand, or you can send a chat to the meeting host. We do have one other person in chambers right now. Please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Steve Volin. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the people who served on the Parking Commission. David Wolfbender, Jim Lickenstorf, David DeBeke, Donna Disk, Christopher Emge, who's here in chambers tonight, Adrian Evans Fernandez, Tracy Gates, Faith Hawkins, Sabina Ion, Jennifer Jenkins, Mary Jane Lemay, Mark Neid, Mary Jo Shaughnessy, Jack Wanninger, and Celeste Wolfinger, including current citizen members, Yeh Ben Binder, Jordan Davis, Ben Dalton, Jackson Murphy, and Katie Yoder. And city staff, including Councilmember Flaherty, Michelle Wall, the Parking Services Director, former Assistant Planning Director Josh Desmond, and former Parking Director Scott Robinson. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all of those volunteers over the years who have done that. Is there anybody on Zoom who has raised their hand or sent a chat?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in chambers? Wonderful. Thank you. I don't think that we have any notes on council schedule. We have a special deliberation session next week. Does anybody else have any comments on schedule upcoming? All right. And I also want to note, council members, do not run away. We need to take the yearly photo. We are all present. I gave y'all a warning. So do not run away. Consolidate to the center. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.